This conference will now be recorded.
Well, if you know that, it was that question.
Well, they know that.
I'm actually.
Hey, Josh.
Yes.
Could you turn your speaker volume down just a little?
His microphone.
Or your microphone?
I think I have it off, or do I not?
Or just speak, just speak a little bit further away from your microphone? Do you have a way of adjusting your speaker volume?
I don't think so.
Is that any better?
Yeah, I think that's fine, Josh.
Okay. I can't hear you guys at all.
Yep. All right, you should be able to hear me now.
Josh, can you hear me?
I can now, yes.
Okay. What? He's got COVID in his family. Oh, sorry.
This is a tree line.
Oh, gotcha. I'm a little slow, sorry. Cut me a little slack. Are we waiting still?
Yeah, he's like a water.
Oh, gotcha. Did, did all of you get the, Breanna, did you get the stuff from the zoning book? You got this, right?
Yes.
Okay.
That was all.
Then I gave them a copy of this morning, the procedures of the hearing from the zoning. I should be in front of you. Did you get that?
Okay. No, all I got was the.
Hey, hey.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. It's 3:10 PM on the ninth. And Susie, representing the town, will be the first to speak on the appeal for the car wash owned by Tanya Mullen and Tyler Johnson.
So I'm Town Attorney James Greenbaum. And before you start receiving any testimony, just because this is like the first official zoning board of adjustment hearing, probably in quite some time, and the zoning board, if I call it a zoning board of adjustment, or board of adjustment, or ZBA, I'm speaking of your board here. And I just wanted to introduce myself and introduce the function of your board to yourselves, just so that we're clear on process and procedure. So you're working, and if, you know, the applicant, the appellant is represented by counsel. So if I speak out of turn, she'll be the first one to say objection, Mr. Greenbaum, you know, you're giving argument. I'm not attempting to give any argument, and that's not my role here tonight. My role is to make sure that there's a process and that everybody follows the process, including this board, okay? So the first thing you would do is you would do a roll call, right? And then determine that you have a quorum to proceed. Okay, then the next thing you would do is inquire as to the jurisdiction from a procedural standpoint. And with that meaning is there are certain process requirements before you can hear anything, okay? And those processes are in the town zoning code, and it's also in the rules that you just recently adopted. And there is a conflict, and I discussed this with Ms. Johnson, the appellant's attorney. So there's conflict in that there are notice requirements that have to be met in order for you to secure jurisdiction. One of those notice requirements involves providing certified mailing to the neighboring property owners. That's in the rules that you just adopted. That is not in the town zoning code, okay? So you should inquire with staff, Susie, the zoning administrator, Susie Sprout, and determine what notice was provided before you open the hearing to hear from anyone, any discussion or argument on the nature, the substance of the appeal. Then if there are questions as to whether there was proper notice, you can ask, you can ask away as to what you can do from there, okay? Now, I already had a brief discussion with Ms. Johnson, and I think we have an agreement that there's not going to be any objection to you proceeding this evening, even though there were some issues about the certified mailing. But the property, I believe, was properly posted. Is that, is that? Okay, now, another issue here to be mindful of is that you have other jurisdictional issues to determine, and that would be your hearing date. So again, the zoning code of the town of Ennis provides that you should have your hearing, shall have your hearing within 30 days of the appeal, and I don't think you've met that requirement. So again, you know, you could take argument from the appellant's attorney as to what to do with that situation. You could ask for, you know, further notices to be provided, or you could proceed. You could take objections, or you could ask for a waiver on any of these issues. I'm not telling you what you do, just pointing out.
We have that waiver in place.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, roll call. Chuck Feldman, Tony, Troy Gillett. Christian Peterson.
Here.
Kurt Cardozo.
Here.
Okay, all five members are present. Roll call, next.
So you have a quorum. You may proceed. Now you would ask about the notice. What was notice provided in accordance with your rules?
Susie, will you please share with us the notice that was provided?
It was actually sent via email. The appeal was to Breanna Johnson by email and also US mail. This notice was published in the Madisonian. I have pictures of the property being posted.
What was the date it was noticed in the Madisonian?
The 20, 26.
Of May, okay.
By Ginger, something notice to them. This was posted on May 23. The property was posted. That's what I did according to the code book.
And the surrounding property owners were not noticed specifically, okay?
And no certified mail.
Okay.
So you've already, you received a waiver on the, on the time of scheduling the hearing. So what you would ask now is for the appellant to, you know, make an objection, continue, you know, whatever she could waive on behalf of the appellant, the lack of certified mailing, I imagine.
Objection from the appellate.
Okay.
It would, it would appear that you have jurisdiction to proceed.
Thank you. Susie, would you please present your staff report?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So the zoning administrator holds that the proposed car wash is not a permitted or conditional use in the town zoning district. Applicant alleges the determination is derogative. Is that right how you said that?
Erroneous. Erroneous.
Happy erroneous.
I know, maybe it's how we say it. So here's a few statements of fact. I haven't been off. So on July 9 of 2021, I received a complaint that a non-conforming commercial sign was on being installed on the subject's premises. I sent a letter on July 19 asking them, letting them know that they were in notice of a violation, instructing them to remove the sign, and included the zoning administrator's determination that the car wash is not a permitted or conditional use. And then there's a script from what I said to them. And I also included the appeals procedure for their reference. No appeal was filed or received by the town with regards to the July 19 determination within the seven days allowed under the town code. And in your packet, that is Exhibit A, what I sent to them. On July 28, the second notice of violation was served on owners Mullen and Johnson as a non-committed sign that had not been removed, instructing them to remove it. On July 29, a third notice was sent, was served on them. On July 31, a fourth notice of violation was served. On February 14, Tanya Mullen appeared with her attorney before Honorable Judge Behar and entered a plea of guilty to violation of the town sign ordinance. One count, agreed to pay a fine, and the remaining third and fourth count violations were dismissed. On November 24, an application for conditional use permit regarding construction of a proposed car wash was to be built on the subject's property and received by the Ennis zoning administrator. The application for conditional use permit was forwarded to the Madison County Planning Board, which at the time was serving as the Ennis Town Planning Board per interlaboral agreement. On December 21, Forrest Manville conducted a preliminary hearing and made the comment, "Car wash does not appear to be permitted or conditionally used in the CCR section of the zoning ordinance." On December 27, a preliminary review was done by Jerry Grebnik, Senior Planner. Josh, can you hear me okay? I kind of forgot about you.
Okay.
Okay. On December 27, the preliminary review was done by Jerry Grebnik, Senior Planner for Great West Engineering, which at the time was providing planning consulting services to the Madison County Planning Board. The following is his comments on that. The application states that the proposed car wash would be located within the core commercial residential under Section 1132C of the town zoning regulations. The list of conditional uses does not include a car wash. Essential services are listed as conditional use. If one reads the definition of essential uses, essential service can be found in 1122. And the definition of essential services is government, public utilities, corporation, and privately owned infrastructures and service facilities that serve, that serve, sorry, lost my place, common neighborhood, community, or regional interests, including, for example, utility lines, fire stations, storm drainage systems, sewer treatment plants, and electrical transmission systems. Based upon this definition, Senior Planner Jerry Grebnik cannot see the car wash meets the criteria for essential service, and thus is not eligible for applying for conditional use. The only alternative available to the applicant is to make the application to amend the zoning regulations to allow car washes as either permitted or conditional use in the CCR district. On January 6, 2022, Senior Planner Jerry Grebnik called, emailed, and sent a letter to the applicant's attorney advising that the applicant was non-conforming as the car wash is neither a permitted or conditional use was allowed in a CCR zoning. The applicant makes a cursory allegation that the zoning administrator's original determination of July 19 was biased, but makes no similar allegations to the appeal findings of the conditional use for the proposed car wash and reached the very same determination at the county. And because the owners failed to make a timely appeal and determination of the July 19, the applicant should not be heard to complain, to hear the complaint that the determination is lacking in that regard. It should be equally noted that applicants have filed an appeal with regards to any, have not filed an appeal with regards to any administrative finding, comments, or determination by Madison County Planning Board, its engineers or consultants, that all agree with that the proposed car wash is not a permitted or conditional use in the CCR. On March 17, Madison County returned the application to the town of Ennis, who then made further evaluation of the applicant and reached the same conclusion as the Madison County Planning Board and the consultant, that a car wash is not a central service, and it is defined in the town code, that a car wash is not permitted or conditionally used in the CCR. The car wash does not meet the definitions or is best described. Car wash does meet the definition or is best described as an automobile facility or automobile service station, neither of which is allowed in the CCR. On April 22, the zoning administrator issued a second written determination that the proposed car wash is not permitted or conditionally used in the CCR. And on May 5, the applicant's appeal was received by the town of Ennis. On May 9, the appeal was forwarded to the zoning board of adjustments, which subsequently held an organizational meeting for the purpose of adopting bylaws or guidelines. A public meeting or public hearing or meeting in this matter was noticed by Ginger Huen, quick treasured posting publication with the hearing date of June 9 at 3 o'clock. The process and procedure for today, the town code provides the zoning administrator has the power and authority to interpret the town code 11-1-7. The code provides authority for the zoning board of appeals to hear and decide appeals alleging an administrative official incorrectly interpreted and applied the provisions of this title. Town code 1119, the town code provides that an appeal must be filed with the zoning administrator within seven calendar days of the final decision of the agency to which the appeal applies. Town code 11110, the town code provides further detail regarding notice of appeal, scheduling appearance, and other particulars. The zoning administrator first determined that the car wash is not permitted in the CCR zoning district in the notice served on the owners dated July 19, 2021. The time to appeal for the determination expired on or about July 26, 2021. The administrative record is that clear that no appeal was filed within seven days as required. Having failed to file a timely appeal, the zoning board of adjustment could find that there is no jurisdiction to proceed, and that owners waived any and all rights to challenge the zoning administrator's determination that the car wash is not a permitted or conditional use in the CCR zoning. On appeal, the zoning board adjustment has the power and authority under the town code and the Montana code to reverse or affirm wholly or partly or modify determination and make, and may make such order, requirements, decisions, or determination as ought to be made and made, and to the end shall have all the powers of the officer from whom the appeal is taken. That's Montana code 7622323. The concurring vote of four members of the board shall be necessary to reverse any determination or to decide in favor of the applicant. As described in above in the staff report, the proposed project does not qualify for conditional use permit as a car wash is not a conditional use in the CCR zoning district. In addition, a car wash cannot possibly consider an essential service as it does not rise to the level of community-wide or regional infrastructure or utility service. Town code 1122, the following persons or departments reach this very same conclusion that the project does not conform to the town CCR zoning district and is not allowable in the zoning district as permitted or conditional. See comments or findings, Great West Engineering, Senior Planner Gary Grebnik, Alex Hoagel, Madison County Planning, Forrest Manville, Kishmit Aril, consultant to the town of Ennis. Based on the findings provided by the consulting experts, Madison County Planning Board, the applicant's, the application to the town zoning administrator, which then upon further review, reasoning and considering consideration of all the facts and circumstances, reached the same conclusion, the proposed car wash is not a permitted or conditional use or essential service, and therefore the project would not qualify for conditional use permit in the CCR. As such, the zoning administrator issued the second determination on April 22, holding that the proposed uses neither permitted or conditional. Exhibit C, the zoning administrator's determination, April 22, entirely consistent with the zoning administrator's determination of July 19, to which no appeal or challenge was made. Moreover, the zoning administrator's determination of July 19, to which no appeal was taken, the determination of April 22 was consistent with all the comments of the. the determination of April 22 was consistent with all the comments of the certified planners, consultants, engineering firm, and Madison County Planning Board. It is difficult to imagine, given all the facts and circumstances, including the applicant's failure to challenge a determination of July 19, that the zoning determination of April 22 is any manner whatsoever, yeah, well, not supported by the reasons, facts, and applicable ordinance code.
Erroneous.
Thank you. I wouldn't screw that up two times in a row.
She's a ratchet swivel, huh?
Thank you, James. The zoning administrator unequivocally denies any allegations of bias. The zoning determination of July 19 was, was the result of careful consideration of the town code applicable zoning provisions. The simple fact is that the proposed car wash is neither a permitted or conditional use in the CCR zoning district. The determination of July 19 made that fact very clear to the applicant, who was advised at that time by the determination that it was dis, whoops, by the determination that if they disagreed with the determination, that they had a right of appeal. However, we got, it's clear that they chose not to allege bias or assert the challenges or file a timely appeal. Applicant's attorney argues in the appeal that the zoning administrator's opinion that the car wash is not a conditional use and that the zoning board of adjustments should reverse the determination by the zoning administrator, Exhibit D. The applicant's attorney suggests that the determination is, and on the basis that the zoning administrator did not apply the design standards in the traditional neighborhood development to the projects, to the proposed project. Traditional neighborhood development is a design overlay with standards and parameters that do not apply in this case because the proposed car wash is neither a permitted or conditional use. TND overlay standards and parameters are intended to provide a certain degree of flexibility in the review process to protect the character, character of the community throughout landscape, aesthetics, and similar overlay requirements. Town code 113F, Article F, overlay districts. However, in order to apply the design standards, landscaping aesthetics, and other parameters, the proposed project must conform to the underlying user sections in the subject zoning district. The purpose of the TND overlay design standards, aesthetics, and other overlay parameters not, is not to provide a means of controlling developments or project and is allowed in the zoning district. It protects community standards. The TND overlay review process does not enlarge or add uses, permitted or conditional, is to what is allowed in the subject underlying zoning district. This specific language to the town code makes it abundantly clear there that the TND overlay does not apply because the proposed car wash is neither permitted as the right or conditional of the CCR. The applicant's attorney devotes a good portion of the appeal, trying to argue that the design standards of the overlay district, however, applicant's attorney overlooks entirely the proposed use simply is not allowed as a permitted or conditioned use in the zoning district and therefore the design standards are not irrelevant. Again, the TND, TND overlay aesthetic guidelines such as landscaping, parking, open space, landscaping, lighting, street access, and other design standards intended to protect the small town character of the community do not broaden the allowable uses in the CCR. The applicant has failed to demonstrate the zoning administrator's determination that the car wash is not a permitted or conditional use in any way because of determined design standards were not considered. TND overlay review process does not even begin to apply unless, unless and until all applicants have the qualified conditional use permit is deemed complete. Project filings deemed by the zoning administrator to be complete and sufficient for the review shall be according priority over the other projects at every step of the review process. In this case, the zoning administrator made a determined determination that the proposed project does not conform to the requirements of the underlying CCR zoning district as a car wash is not a permitted or conditional use. So therefore, the project never gets to the town commission for conditional review. The attempt to argue that the condition review process applies or somehow renders the zoning administrator's determination is so fundamental flawed as to have no bearing or irrelevance whatsoever on the appeal. And the TND overlay district does not change the fact that the car wash is not a permitted or conditional use. Since the car wash is not a conditional use, the condition, conditional use permit review process of the overlay district simply does not apply and does nothing to render the determination.
Erroneous.
Yeah.
Just say it. Say erroneous.
No, I'm good.
It's error with.
I know.
With suffix on it.
Thanks. The applicant's attorney, the applicant's attorney states at paragraph six of the appeal, the determination for the zoning administrator states the car wash appears to fit within the common accepted usage of the phrase automobile service stations or facilities related to serving automobiles. This is true. The zoning administrator believes that a proposed car wash is within the meanings of automobile service stations or facilities as defined in the town zoning code. The applicant attorney then states that the determination contains no analysis of the applicable zoning code, which addresses automobile washing, washing. Applicant's attorney first quotes the determination, which referenced the definitions addressed in the zoning administrator's determination, therefore admitting that the zoning administrator did in fact consider the definitions, but the attempts to argue the determination did not address the definitions. To clarify, the zoning administrator states the purpose of the review and the purpose of making the record for the zoning board of adjustments, complete and not subject to error. The zoning administrator did in fact look at and review, consider all the applicable definitions and code sections before reaching the determination. The plain meaning of the word car wash as appears to fit within the common accepted use of the phrase automobile service stations or facilities related to the service in automobile, because the proposed uses neither permitted or conditional in the CCR. No condition use or permitted is available at this time under 1132. For all the reasons, facts, and circumstances herein, the zoning administrator finds that the proposed use is not a permitted or conditional use in the town's commercial zoning district and therefore the application is denied. Moreover, the applicant's attorney apparently agrees, apparently agrees that the car wash fits within the meaning of automobile services or facility. It remains unexplained how this line of argument from the applicant helps the applicant because neither automobile service or facilities are allowed in the CCR zoning district. The zoning administrator notes that the proposed car wash apparently fits the meaning of these defined uses, which are not permitted or conditional in the CCR. Conclusion, the zoning administrator stands by the original determination of July 19 and the second determination of April 22, which consistently holds that the proposed car wash is not a permitted or conditional use in the CCR. The zoning administrator believes that the determination in this matter are entirely consistent with the facts and circumstances herein. Yeah. And then you have all your exhibits behind you. You didn't look at them when I was talking.
So, Suzy, on page four, and the pages aren't numbered, but if you look at discussion, which is page four, if you counted down to the second paragraph, there was a type of graphical error in there. The bottom of that paragraph where it says July 19, 2022 should be 2021. I'm sure everybody probably caught that. So if there's, were there any other errors? As far as dates go?
Same page, paragraph four, five, six. May 9th is May 17.
Yeah. Are you, did you get the, the printout, the same copy?
That's the amended.
That's the amended?
Same page. What page is it? No, it's my page.
Oh, page three.
Or page four. Paragraph two refers July 19, 2022.
Okay, so that should be 21.
Should be 21. Further down that paragraph again, 2022 should be 21.
Okay.
And then further down on the right hand side of the page.
Right.
Just above process and procedure, it says on May 9. That should be May 17.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman.
Everybody agree with us? Um, you got it on the 9th. I emailed you on the 9th. You didn't meet until the 17th.
Okay. That's what you're agreeing with.
Yep.
Okay. My error.
So we're going to leave it as May 9?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you for those.
All right. Thank you, Susan. Is that everything that you wanted to share with us?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll take some vocabulary lessons.
We disconnected your internet. You can't play on it anymore.
Okay, next we're.
Next, we're going to hear from the appellant. Breann will speak first and needs to be sworn in. Who does that?
I do not have to be sworn in. I'm the attorney. I'm an officer of the court.
I see.
Yes.
Proceed, officer.
I need to, bit of bump in the road. Just for Suzy and, or Ronias and Arogenus, I was, my first year of practice in the real world, I was doing foreclosure defense in Lake County, Florida, which had the highest rate of foreclosure in the nation. And it was this kangaroo court and you'd do 30 or 40 settings in the morning and 30 or 40 settings in the afternoon. And so you get up there, and I was a young attorney, I was really nervous. And one of the things that when you reached a deal with the bank, your client would sign a waiver of prosecution. And I got up and it was my last hearing that I ever did there, and I was blowing through trying to get, you know, everything done. And I stood up in front of the court and I said that my client had signed a waiver of prostitution and that we could proceed. And the judge, who was very mean, she was not, she was very mean, actually cracked a smile. I felt like that was a victory. So, my name is Breann Johnson. I am the attorney for the appellants, Tanya Moen and Tyler Johnson. And I provided all of you with a binder because I'm going to reference some materials throughout. And I will refer to the tabs as they appear in your binder. One thing I wanted to address just initially was the staff report, which I was just provided with today. So I'm kind of going by the seat of my pants here. One thing that I want to point out is that the July 19 determination, as it's been characterized by the zoning administrator, there has been a completion from the beginning as to the difference between the sign violation and an actual permit application for the permitting on the lot. The clients had posted a sign on the lot saying car wash coming soon and were ticketed for a signage violation for not having had a proper permit for the sign. Along with that, they were also notified that you cannot have a car wash in the CCR district. And were given the appeal procedures. To be clear, my clients have never submitted a full application as of July 19, 2021. There was no application on which to submit a denial and therefore there was no application on which to appeal. The first application was not actually submitted until November 22, 2021, which is the subject of the appeal before you today. So I want to make it clear that this is not our second run at this. The initial circumstance was a signage violation. That was what my client was ticketed on and that is what she ultimately entered a plea and settlement agreement with before the court. There has been no prior application regarding this project. So today, I'm going to cover a few things. And the first thing that I kind of want to start off with, just kind of set the stage, is I am very understanding that town is just kind of coming into more of a formal permitting process, even though you've had one in place for many, many years. For instance, I had ventured into a waiver for having this hearing six days later than what it should have done under the code, and that was conditioned upon me getting a copy of the formal procedures that would govern the hearing at least seven days in advance. I got them yesterday at 3:40 PM. And I had been given the courtesy of the sample copy that you had from Cascade County. And so that's why you'll see tab one in your hearing binder was me being prepared for whatever the procedure might be. And I had done out a color-coded comparative analysis of the appeal hearing procedure. Blue represents the Cascade County sample document I was working off of. Green is what already appears in your town code. And so I think that's kind of somewhat endemic of how unpredictable and frustrating the permitting process has become in the post Art Behar era. And Mr. Behar was the prior zoning administrator. I believe he had been the zoning administrator for some time. I began representing some people working on projects, my Willow and 4050 Development on projects as he transitioned out of that position and then Suzy Sprout took over it. And during that time, what you need to do in order to get a valid permit before the town of NS has been a moving target. And I think my clients today demonstrate how much of a moving target that has been throughout the time, from the time they did their due diligence on purchasing the property up until today's hearing. That said, I think that there is a difference between the letter and the spirit of the town code. And I'm going to help you along with provide some supporting evidence to justify that. So the timeline then has kind of already been covered by Suzy in her staff report. Like I said, I discount any of the July 21, 2021 stuff because that was not related to an actual permit application that was pending before the zoning administrator that was solely in regard to a sign permit issue. And that is what Ms. Moen was ultimately ticketed under, was the sign permit code violation, not a zoning violation. So in November 22 of 21, we did formally submit a zone site application and a conditional use permit application. You will find those submissions under tab seven of your binder before you. One and a half months later, on January 7, 2022, I was contacted by Jerry Grebnek, who I believe is with Great Western Engineering. He emailed me Forrest Mandeville's initial review, which as you'll see under tab four is dated December 21, 2021. I was not in receipt of that until January 7. At any point during the process for permitting, as I know that Alex Hoagel had left with Madison County and Madison County had been who had been assisting for planning through the interlocal agreement that you have, I have dealt or been referenced to talk to Nicole from Cushing Terrell, Cody Markser from Madison County, Jerry Grebnek from Great Western Engineering, and Forrest Mandeville from Forrest Mandeville Consulting. I was never given an exact primary point of contact and so I would just, when I emailed for information or questions, I'd just kind of send it to the whole group and see what filtered out. And I know, again, the town has been in transition, but when you look at that from the standpoint of an applicant who is being, who has been told various things about how the permitting process actually works and then to actually go through it can be very frustrating, time-consuming, and expensive when you do not know who your point of contact is primarily supposed to be or who you are supposed to be responding to in regard to which written things you have received. Six months later, on April 28, 2022, is when we received the denial letter from the zoning administrator. Under the code, that is the document that would trigger the appellate procedure. Some of what was referenced in Ms. Sprout's staff report was that we had received things from Forrest Mandeville and Jerry Grebnek and we did not respond to those as anything asserting our position or appealing those decisions or recommendations. and we did not respond to those as anything asserting our position or appealing those decisions or recommendations. Uh, under your code, my understanding was, and what I was being told at the time, that those were the consultants who were advising, who were providing the staff report information that we would ultimately get from the zoning administrator. We did not file any sort of appeal or rebuttal. I did have a follow-up meeting with Forrest Mandeville and I believe somebody from Great Western, and I think maybe Cody Markser, who was, I don't think she's with Madison County anymore. She's not in the role that she was. And I don't know exactly what her role was either. I think she might have been pinch hitting for Alex Hoagal a little bit. Again, not entirely sure. Um, and so we did not respond to any of the staff reports because we believed that those were initial comments about the status of where our application was and maybe preliminary where the zoning administration administrator would be in the decision process. I also tried following up to find out where the status was and where we were headed. Um, and I did not receive a response to that until I got the denial. And I will note that I received the denial on April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. The actual document was dated April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two. Given that you have a very tight deadline for appeal, which is seven calendar days, I emailed Ms. Sprout back and requested if the appeal deadline would run, begin to run on April twenty-second or twenty-eighth. She confirmed that it would not run until the date I had actually received it. So when I submitted the appeal on May fifth, twenty-twenty-two, the appeal was timely. Um, you will see Ms. Sprout's denial at tab five in your binder, and you will see the appeal that we submitted at tab six in your binder. And as we discussed earlier, which my clients had formally waived through written agreement with the board, the deadline for the appeal hearing should have been June third, twenty-twenty-two, um, and we agreed to move it to today. I'm not going to belabor the point of the difficulty that it has been to try to comply um, because of it being a moving target, but I do want you to view all of the information you're going to be presented with with some eye toward that. The substance of our appeal, um, is, I think, a, uh, a classic legal interpretation dispute. Um, the staff report says the T and D overlay does not apply until, um, your CCR has met either the permitted or conditional uses and that your project falls within to one of those, um, categories. What is somewhat helpful retrospectively is that there has been an interpretation that has been articulated. It has not been articulated until today. There has been no formal staff findings, reports, or anything similar that can be referenced or used to interpret the T and D overlay for the town of Ennis. Prior to my doing permitting with the town through other clients, which would be My Willow and Forty-Fifty, um, there had not been a formal procedure followed. Therefore, there had been no staff reports. There had been no findings of fact. There had been no, oh, no written record on which to rely. What you went and did is you drove around and you looked at the zoning map, and you looked at what was built in that zoning, and you said, "I think we can do what we want to do." Up until the new process, which is actually should have been the old process, was put into place, uh, there was no interpretation or guidance on how these things were to be done. There were no forms um, other than the zone site permit form. So our interpretation, and this goes back to some additional information, which I will get into in a moment, the T and D overlay was, was intended to allow flexibility and discretion to permit uses that are consistent with the kinds of businesses that would bring business to the town's core, support adjacent businesses, and address the need for the town. As we discussed, our application was preemptively denied in July of twenty-twenty-one, which was actually a conflation with the violation regarding signage. And, uh, I contend in my appeal, uh, that the T and D overlay, as it applies to the specific project, should have been addressed by the zoning administrator in the denial. The denial does not discuss the T and D overlay at all. The only thing that does specifically address the T and D overlay are the comments that I just received today and you just heard from Ms. Sprout. Something that I do want to emphasize out of the code to maybe help contextualize, um, where we are coming from in our appeal comes out of, uh, paragraph five of our appeal, which again is tab six in your binder. Some of the goals, and I'm going to quote here, some of the goals of the CCR zoning area are, quote, "Optimize business opportunities consistent with the primary goals." That's one of your overarching planning documents. Quote, "Facilitate small businesses consistent with Ennis's small-town character." Quote, "Provide incentives to attract and keep businesses within the core area." And quote, "Encourage development of vacant and underutilized spaces in the core area." That you will find at eleven dash three dash one. In delineating the parameters of the types and kinds of structures that can be permitted within the T CCR T and D overlay zoning district, the T and D design parameters are broad and may use all zoning standards and procedures of the zoning code as a, quote, guide. You can find that at eleven dash three F dash one, D sub one. Interpretation of how the T and D applies to any particular project, quote, "Will be site-specific and likely to vary based upon geographic location of the town when with changes in materials and technologies in time." None of this was addressed, um, until today. None of this had been previously addressed regarding the other permitting projects that I had done. Um, and so there were no prior staff reports or findings of fact that were available uh, for us to review or to attempt, uh, to use to conform the project to those guidelines. Um... So essentially, the interpretation of the T and D leading up to this particular permit given to the town was that it was broad and flexible but uninterpreted except by referring to other projects that have been built within the CCR district with the T and D overlay. The two projects that have been built that we can reference are the Family Dollar and the Drive-Thru Coffee Shop. I think it's Sure Shot now. I, everybody refers to it as Maple's Coffee, and that's stuck in my head, so I apologize if I'm giving the wrong business name. But it's the Drive-Thru Coffee standard over here. They are both within the North Forty subdivision, as is my client's proposed project. I will note, and this was called out in my original application, that the coffee shop does not strictly lie within a conditional or permitted use under the CCR. Drive-ins are not allowed in a CCR. Um, but they are allowed in a highway commercial, um, zoning district. Again, the thought being, given that this was basically the equivalent of a staff report or factual findings, there, this is where the T and D comes into play, and this is where, um, we have some flexibility with what kind of businesses develop, especially on a lot that is adjacent to a main artery like Highway two eighty-seven. Today, I will have two witnesses for you. Um, I will have my client, Tyler Johnson. He will appear first. And then we have Josh, Josh Vievich. Um, and Josh is the owner of the North Forty... Good, you're still hearing me. Great. Um, Josh is the owner of the North Forty subdivision, um, and he has been with the project since its inception. Um, it also, I think, will give some context to the status of this current application and why it presents a unique and somewhat one-off, uh, problem for the town. I don't think that this is a project that you have fifty more lined up behind it with the same kind of factual issues and circumstances. Um, this is one of these things that has fallen into the crevice um, between Mr. Bahar's tenure and Ms. Sprout's tenure, losing the Madison County planner, uh, and whatever's coming next. I'm not really sure where that's at. Um, and so I don't think that there, what you're looking at here is necessarily something that is going to continue to happen. I hope not for you guys. Uh, would be great for me because it's generating business, but, um, that's not really how we want to do it. Um, at the end of all this, I want to, I will provide, and I have given you something that I'll discuss after my witnesses for a path forward about how we can get this to conform with the town zoning code, both in black letter and in spirit. So now we get to do the swearing. Um, Tyler. Do you, I think, do you do that, Madam Chairperson? Ginger? Jim?
You're, well, you're a notary. You could administer an oath.
Um, is it, is it just a swear the truth to tell the whole truth?
Pretty much.
So help you bow.
Yeah.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and not the one that treats you well.
It's good enough for me.
All right, so why don't I have you sit kind of like this, so you can kind of see the board but also me? Does that work for everybody?
House.
All right.
Josh is going to hear him.
Josh, can you hear me?
No.
Breann, I don't, I don't, you're about to do like a direct examination? I think that...
We're going to ask some questions, which is allowed under the procedures.
Where's that?
Should be allowed under the procedures because... And if not, these are the procedures I prepared for based on what I had.
We didn't change anything.
All witnesses, so let's see. The first person may hear the affirmative. She'll be the applicant or his agent. First person who had the negative side, zoning administrator. Witnesses may be called and factual evidence may be submitted. All witnesses shall be sworn, or they shall affirm that their testimony is true. I think it is a little bit out of order, um, or different from how...
What's out of order?
Uh, it looks like, um, we do, sorry. Apologize. I got these at three forty P M. yesterday. Steven of the case by the chairman. Well, I guess I kind of did that with Suzie. Argument in favor of the appeal. I just did that.
Okay.
Argument in opposition of the appeal, then rebuttal by both sides, and then we get into witnesses.
Okay.
So...
You, you're saying that you only received the Town of Ennis zoning board of judgment rules of procedure yesterday?
Three forty P M., yes.
You have a copy.
You weren't at the hearing on May seventeenth?
Yes, I was at the hearing.
And you have a copy of the Cascade County ones.
Had been adopted at that time. What I received was the sample cock, working copy that you had given for from Cascade County.
So were the procedures regarding, uh, presentation of witnesses different from May seventeenth?
I may have interpreted incorrectly, but I will have witnesses, so I just...
Well, you're, yes, you're entitled to have witnesses, but I think the process here is that you're about to do a direct examination, and then you're going to conclude based on your direct examination. You're going to argue against any attempt to cross-examine because that's also...
I'm not following that procedure, and that procedure is not outlined herein. I can present witnesses. I can ask my witness to provide certain answers to certain questions.
I don't, I don't think that's what's contemplated by the rules. I don't think that's what...
Questions of him as well.
I don't think that's what's contemplated by the rules. I think the rules are clear that each person gets up. He can speak. He can give...
I just got them.
You're interrupting me. You didn't just get them. You were there on May seventeenth. So, you know, to have your witness present, he can present. You know, the chairman, uh, chairwoman can decide, uh, ultimately on the process that will unfold. But to me, I mean, it's not a trial. This is an appeal. If he has testimony that he wants to give, then he should give his testimony. But this is not a trial. It's an appeal.
And there's no contest that you received our Madison, or Town of Ennis rules yesterday.
I did not receive them in the timeline provided under the waiver.
The waiver had a notation in it that you would, you wanted them within seven days. I noted in there before I signed it that if they were available, you would have them within seven days. But they were not available. That's why you got them yesterday when the rest of us got them. They are an exact replica of the ones you received on May seventeenth that referenced Cascade County. There was nothing that was changed.
So shall we then move on to argument in opposition?
My understanding is, Mr. Ty, excuse me, Mr. Johnson, Tyler Johnson, will now speak.
Um, and so he would fall under the argument in favor?
Yes.
And he would speak to the issue of why the determination is erroneous.
Understood.
Right.
But he can also provide whether evidence he believes is deemed, uh, applicable to the case.
Or to the appeal. Excuse me.
Subject to the, uh, subject to the board. I'm, I don't, I don't make those rulings.
Knowing that it's almost five minutes after four, I, I'd like you to be able to share whatever you want to share.
Yeah, I've got one minute and a half. My name is Tyler Johnson. Um, Tanya Moen and I purchased this property. Um, I want to be clear. We purchased this property in July of twenty-twenty. Um, uh, before we purchased this property, our attorney that we had chosen, I'm sorry, our attorney, our, uh, realtor that we had chosen was Mr. Josh Vievich. Josh was the landowner. He was also the attorney of the property, or I keep saying attorney. I'm sorry. The realtor of the property as well, he worked as our realtor, and he also worked as the owner of that property. Um, Tanya and I had gone through this town and listened to a lot of complaints from people. Um, a lot of complaints from business owners, a lot of complaints from everybody of this town needing a car wash that actually worked. Um, I want to be clear, there's also another direction that we went is, there's also a law, a rule that you guys have in this county, Yellowstone, in Madison County, that is to wash your boats after they get done on the river. I believe it's Keep Madison Clean. Um, that also had something else to do with this because I do believe that that car wash is down. And maybe it's different now, but at the time we moved forward with this, the car wash was down as much as it was open. Tanya and I contacted, actually, Tanya contacted Josh originally, said, "I think that Josh owns this piece of property." Um, we had talked to Josh from the very beginning of car wash, from the very start. Every time we stopped, started looking at property was car wash. Um, I even had Jeremy, who is the owner of To Be, To Be Clean, I believe, uh, car wash company who actually provides the car wash itself, comes in, draws up the plan, does everything. He provided Tanya and I a layout. That's what helped with the whole business plan, everything we've given to you guys, um, up on this town. During this process, Jeremy had asked us to go through these steps. Um, some of the steps were, find out with the water department, the sewer, if that's going to be okay. Josh had given us Kelly's information. Um, Tanya and I had both spoken, spoke to Kelly, said that everything was compliant upon the process. There was enough water. The sewer was fine. All that was done at the time. To my knowledge, he is no longer in that position. Um, we were told from the very beginning, um, Josh contacted, uh, it's Bahar, is that Judge Bahar? Judge Bahar, I believe, was in the position to make the zoning at the time. Our realtor and owner of the property contacted him, went through a conversation with him, and was, we were told to move forward on a car wash would be good there. It was a hundred percent permitted. With that being said, we purchased the land. Um, the reason that we put up a sign after the car wash was already done a year later was because it was COVID, COVID-nineteen. People were, different times were different, weird situation. Jeremy had told us, "Hey, I don't even think I can get a car wash put in in this timeframe a year after just because of employee shortages, COVID, all that." The reason the sign went up was because we were told from another realtor in town that there was another gentleman, or gentleman, I should say multiple, pursuing the opportunity of putting a car wash on that main road there as well. Um, they were shown a piece of property very close to us that was, to my knowledge, also CCR. Um, with that being said, we went, I own a sign company in Billings. I read over your sign permitting, and there's no such thing in Ennis, Madison County, as a temporary sign permit. Um, I own a sign company in Billings in Yellowstone County, so with that being said, I put the sign up. Um, we had never filled out an application for a car wash, and we were denied before we filled out the application. So when she talks about the nineteenth, guys, we didn't even have an application into you guys. So with that process alone, we were denied something we didn't even put in for. I was also told in a timeframe that Suzie was getting, I contacted Suzie, said, "What are the steps you'd like us to take? You know, where are we at with this? Let me look into it. I'm new." There was process after process. My frustration with Suzie was this. I said, "What steps would you like us to take?" And she kept coming back saying, "I don't have the answers." And on her defense, I respect her fulfillment, the position that she did, and I, I respect the position that she moved forward to try and get the answer she did. At one point, I was told that she was getting heat from everybody in town, and I said, "On what? Zoning of CCR?" Zoning of CCR is not permitted for car wash? I will also tell you that CCR in the state of Montana, there is multiple car washes in the state of Montana that are zoned CCR in the state of Montana. Jeremy, the gentleman that is from To, Auto Be, Auto Be Cleaner, I apologize, it's not in front of me, Jeremy had said there is also car washes in that zone. From the very beginning, Josh Vievich, we were told it would be an easy process come through. That's why we were in no big hurry to put in the permitting, do everything. Once we put the car wash sign up, that's when all this broke loose. Pull up some other things, I apologize. I went, I thought it was going to be a process of questions. Made it more formal. What's that?
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If, if we could talk to you.
Yeah.
Just be sure your mic is on.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Okay, here we go. Sorry about that. We have in this process, Tanya and I have gone around town. Um, obviously this is a small town. My other half is a hairdresser, so she gets talked to probably more than most about situations and stuff and we have not had one negative comment about a new car wash coming to this town. I will also tell you in open court via the sign ticket, Judge Bahar's exact words were in open court, I was looking forward to a new, a new car wash. So that's also another situation where we were under the understanding when the time being when we purchased the land, that there could be a car wash put in there. The zoning CCR and highway commercial are not very clear in your guys' zoning of car wash permitted, non-car wash permitted. There are also other locations along that highway that are zoned incorrectly for what they are, as Bree has came out and said that. The process has been very, very, very long. We have been told one thing, another thing happens, one thing, another thing happens, one thing, another thing happens. We've also spent the extra money to try and find the easy way out for everybody to try and move forward. It was spoke to my attention of what else could we put there? Maybe move to this. We purchased the land originally to put a car wash there. We were told from the person in charge at the time. We were told from the person in charge at the time that a car wash was available. It was to be put in there and it was, everything was to move forward. All the process was done.
Your intentions were made clear before the purchase of the property?
Yes, sir. A hundred percent.
They were made clear to- They were made clear to-
Mr. Vievich at our real estate agent and- Mr. Bahar. Yeah, Mr. Bahar at the time, phone call conversation was done. Obviously, I've taken the class for the real estate as well. As a realtor, Josh is going to have to-
Disclose.
He's going to have to disclose that. He's going to have to go through all that. I mean, with that being said, Josh and I are on the same page here. If I had the other back saying, wouldn't I be mad at Josh? Saying, hey, guys, you're by, you're my realtor, you told me this, why, why now? He, he's on the same page as me. The other thing that he's been baffled, like Josh has done the majority of this just because he's baffled. The denying of the permit before it even was put in, we got a denial letter and we need to fill one out.
Who, when did you get a copy of the CCNRs, the physical copy of them?
Physical copy of a CCR was given to me, I would say I can, and bear with me, I apologize.
No, I don't want to date with-
I would say 2020, somewhere in there.
Prior to your closing on the property?
Oh, oh, no, no, no. We, we had gone through the whole, what it was zoned at, this is where it was at.
Were aware on the CCNRs that the car wash was not in the zone?
We were told that it was allowed to be.
No, no, I'm talking about a physical copy that you read.
Yes, so we, so we had the cop-
Initial copy of it in your closing documents?
Um, I do not believe so, but as a realtor, he, Josh would have had to say the zoning was correct for what we were selling the piece of property for.
Understood. When you buy a piece of real estate, if you buy in a, in a subdivision or whatever, you got a copy of the CCNRs, at closing, you initial them that you read them and agreed to them?
Yes.
So you did sign the-
Yes, I, yes, no, yes. I did sign with, and I assigned those CCRs in intent to a car wash being okayed in there from the person in charge.
Where, where in the CCNRs does it say?
You're talking about the covenants, conditions and restrictions, not the core commercial residential zoning. Those are two different things.
Okay. Okay. Right.
The CCR is the zoning designation for the piece of property. You do not get a copy of the zoning code when you buy a piece of property.
On a commercial property? No?
That is not part of the standard transaction. It may be something that you get, and Josh can maybe address it more too. But what you do get are the covenants and conditions that are restricting the land from the subdivision itself, which is different from-
Okay, sorry, thank you for that, that clarification. I, I guess what I'm, what, what I'm trying to understand is, is is the, where the disconnect came from when he came to buy the land from Josh Vievich, Mr. Bahar, and all of this is all, it, to me, it sounds like, like hearsay, and that's why I'm asking, where you provided a physical copy of the, the commercial? The core commercial?
For, uh, sake of clarity, I'm, I'm like, getting on the mic. For sake of clarity, speak of the zoning code versus the covenants.
Okay, so zoning code, sorry, I'm, yeah, if I'm not using the, I, I just want to know where you provided a physical paper copy of the zoning code for this piece of property, is that correct? Did I ask it correctly?
If that's your question?
Yes, sir. I, to be honest with you, I can't answer that question. I believe so. I know that the question was asked through the, through the car wash gentleman, Mr. Jeremy. He had said, what is it zoned? He said, here's your steps you need to do. Here's this, this, this and this. It is zoned at CCR. CCR shouldn't be an issue. Here's what I would suggest, have Josh contact the person in charge. Josh contacted him, wouldn't be an issue. With, with that being said, it was Josh's job as representing me as a realtor to get that answer before we closed.
Right.
And he moved forward in that position being said.
Okay. I just wanted to know if it was physically in writing that you saw.
The, the other problem that we now proceed is there's no clear zoning where it says car wash.
No, but if I can ask Suzie, the zoning says automotive and repair facilities and in your statement earlier, you said that you and Brienne uh, agreed that the car wash fell under that classification, correct? Or the TND? And we apologize for the, the frustration. We're a, we're a brand new board.
I appreciate you guys, that's where I'm-
Yeah.
We're all, I, I'm glad I'm here being the process and tried to be, if it would have been me and Billings, I wouldn't, but Tanya has been, I believe, to my knowledge, every one of you are friends of hers or acquaintances and she, we've walked through this process as well. I just am at the stage now where it's like, all right, it hasn't just cost a little bit, it's starting to cost a lot. And with what we were told when we purchased it and everything else, this is where we're at. Um, we've been told the city council is going to see it five times. Suzie's exact words to me a month and a half ago on the phone, I will get it to the city council. It didn't get put on last month's. With all this being said, it's just been a process that is not getting pushed through. That is why Brienne is in the position.
So I'm going to ask again, one more time, and if the attorneys in the room can clarify this for me. When you buy real estate, you should, you, you get all these, these papers of what, what the land is, you know, you get a title report, you get all these certain things that, that you sign at, at closing. So when you buy a commercial piece of property, the, the TND or the zoning or any of that stuff is not part of it?
No, no.
Okay, that's what I mean.
Yeah, that's not part of it. Unless, as the buyer, you request it. Unless, as the buyer, you request those documents or request
Or you go to the city and get a copy.
I'm just saying, that's what I'm saying.
And for, for sake of clarification, the recorded documents that an owner gets, you know, prospective purchaser that, that is disclosed in a title report, those covenants of record, that's not part of this hearing. Now, sometimes, and it happens probably often than not, that there may be conflicts between covenants that are recorded versus actual zoning code. But for your purposes, you're not dealing with the covenants.
And to be clear, there are covenants that we're arguing with the supersede or-
Okay.
Yeah.
We aren't arguing-
I guess I'm just trying to understand that this was all verbal and not written for my own.
And if I could point you to in your code at, um, I think the two, Josh is also here to get testimony, um, and Josh can kind of also address what this process was, but there is a-
Are you looking for the, the definition of automobile service?
No, 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 I have, I have local right here. I'm just trying to get to the particular part. There's something that says basically, if you're going to initiate a zoning or a zone permit, that you discuss it with the zoning administrator. It does not require that to be written, but let me find that specific thing. And so pursuant to that, they followed what the process was. You just don't have a, a pre-approval or a pre-permit process. It's just, it's from what, how I read it, it's a-
On this-
Let me find it already.
On this process to where she's at, to my knowledge, and I believe Josh will be able to help you with this, where we were told from the Bahar side of it, where we could get away with car wash was it allowed a, Bree, can you flip me, wasn't it? Like a club, like a membership, as long as you allowed a membership, a club, our car wash would have membership. It would be a monthly membership car wash. That's where through Bahar it was told, and I'm, and Josh will clarify that, that was, I believe, some of the direction it went. That's why we're said, I, we could get away with it this easy through this way.
So tell me a little bit about your, your car wash. Is it automatic? Is it a full service? Is it-
Thank you for asking. You're the first person that's ever asked. I think the town will love this. It's both. We're going to have, the initial goal is one for now, potentially two drive-throughs that will be touchless. Um, they're top of the line. The whole goal is Mustang green. I mean, Tanya grew up here. It's the mining world. It's the Madison, it's the fishing. I mean, the, the landscaping that we plan on doing, everything is beautiful and it's, I want them to pull through. The ultimate goal is everybody driving from everywhere else, keep Yellowstone clean, get your car washed. That's the goal. We'll have three handhelds for the gentlemen that have the fishing situations to wash their boats to keep the Madison River clean. The other issue, guys, if you got your car washed over here, you drive out on gravel. You get dirty initially.
You don't have to sell me on a new car wash. Okay, I just wanted to know about, about what yours was gonna, was gonna have. I have another question. We have a sewage problem in this, this town. We have, um, a water problem. Have you contacted the DEQ?
Perfect, yes. So Jeremy, the gentleman that has the Auto Be Cleaner, whatever, he is the man that comes in and says, here's what we're going to have for holding tanks, here's what we have for reclaiming, here's where we drop everything. It's all in the process and part of the plan that we had from the beginning.
Pre-treatment to the sewer lines all-
Pre-treatment to the sewer, it goes into a sludge pond and cool, I, it's been a while since I've looked at it, but yes. Uh, to be straight up honest with you, to my knowledge from gentleman that owns the company, the one here is actually not even up to code to what the state, uh, is going to make mandatory. Yeah, no, 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 but I'm saying we will be up to code for the state, not for just the city.
Okay, so, so you do know, I mean, you have, you are aware, I'm not saying this correctly, but the DEQ has blessed this car wash for our lagoon and, and our sewage treatment plant.
You can't get DEQ approval until you have the permit from the town.
Okay.
So, and that's, um, you know, when we get to rebuttal, I will point you to steps two and three in the, um, the binder that I gave you. You can, you can, most of, or at least the two that I've given so far, uh, one of the conditions on the permit is that it needs DEQ standards.
And, and correct me if I'm ever asking anything out of, out of line. I'm just trying to put it all together.
I appreciate you for asking.
DEQ won't consider the project for permitting until it gets through this, this conditional use permit at the town or town level.
I don't mean to steal the floor, but I have one more question.
Please, yeah, I-
So you're on 287. If you've been here in the summertime, it backs up all the way past town pump, or not town pump, but, uh, the other gas station on the north.
Okay. I was just asking if you guys had the plans. It all explains what you're about to ask me, I promise.
So, so how, how is the flow of, of your traffic in and out? Is it going to go behind and back out?
Yes, yes. You will go down to the right hand side.
Not in and out.
And, and I believe, and I don't know where they're at, I know that you guys should have copies of them, if not, but I know that the city does. Josh had, was kind enough to put the whole thing together for us. It shows where you actually turn at the dollar store, you go to the back, you'll actually enter back into the dollar store, to my knowledge, and then go back that way. So you won't be entering right into the road. It will be on to in front of the dollar store, come back asphalt to asphalt or pavement to pavement. The whole concrete slab will be, uh, heated underneath, so therefore from the winter times, it's not a big mess there as well. It'll have a drain system. The process that I took to, to talk to you earlier about how you said the sewer and the water, before we ever moved forward with purchasing the property, Kelly looked at the product, progress, looked at the whole proposal, the whole everything, and Kelly walked us through and said, yes, I, yeah, my blessing a hundred percent. We also are about an eighth of the water use, and I apologize, it's not in front of me, I thought you guys had it all, but it provides in the, in the application of how many actually gallons per car we use, which is way less than you would actually think.
So are you recycling the water?
Yes, we would be. Yeah. It comes back into filtration system. And that, that process alone is like, that's, that's the expensive part.
It's gotta be very-
Yep. And what there is, there's a sludge pond and, and please, I, once this started going, I kind of stepped back and went to the other businesses, the process that we've gone. To my knowledge, it goes into a sludge pond underneath. You get a pump, either a pump truck or you have your own, you suck it out, you find somewhere to dump it that's accessible.
Is the application part of our review?
So that's why, okay.
And to clarify, it's not a sludge pond. It is a tank.
Yeah.
It's not like seeping into a ground.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Tank and under DEQ, they have to get qualified or certified waste cleaners to deal, to drain those tanks.
And to my knowledge, DEQ, yeah, DEQ does the stopping by making sure that we're up to code and date with all of the new chemicals and stuff.
I'm very familiar with DEQ.
Yeah, I can imagine. I, yes, I don't know about you on this.
So, um, Tony, I just want to clarify, for purposes of, conditional use permits are reviewed and issued by the town commissioners. And that this not a conditional use permit hearing, this is only to determine whether the zoning administrations, uh, administrators determination that the use is not permitted or conditional, whether her finding, her determination was erroneous or not.
If you can circle back just quickly, you had a question about what the process, the pre-process is. It is under 11 dash 3F dash 1 C2. A person, a property owner or other person considering a TND project shall first meet with the zoning administrator to review the nature type and location of the proposed project. The zoning administrator shall provide information and answer questions about the process together with a list of submission requirements and a tentative schedule of review stages and procedures consistent with the scale and nature of the applicant's proposed project. The applicant will provide a draft TND agreement that describes all facets of the project, including the public and private improvements and schedule of the project. Formal reviews will not be initiated until all required information has been submitted to the zoning administrator. So what I want to clarify there is this was kind of done in two parts. They had the informational meeting when our Bahar was in charge of zoning. And, uh, also, there had never been, or has not been enforced for an applicant to provide a TND agreement. I had done last fall the My Willow condo project, um, and TND agreement had not been part of the process at that point. And TND agreement had not been part of the process at that point. By the time we got to the second condo project, which was kind of a duplicate of the first, um, we were told then that they were now enforcing this part of the TND agreement needing to be in place. There was no form available. I was provided with a sample of one that had been in place. And so that's part of what, um, that came up post-application submission for this project. And so in part of your binder, there is a proposed TND agreement.
Would you cite the code number?
Oh, it's, um, eleven dash three F.
F as in Frank.
F as in Frank. Dash one subsection C two. Okay, thank you.
Brianna, a question of you. Are you in receipt of Great West Engineering Jerry's email to the town of Ennis dated December twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-one? Is this one of the exhibits that was provided by Susie today? I'm not sure if this was part of that. It's dated December seventh, twenty-twenty-one?
Twenty-seven.
December twenty-seventh?
Who, Ginger?
I am not seeing December twenty-seven. I'm not seeing.
December B.
December B? And I don't have my computer with me, otherwise I could just search for it. Oh, December B, okay. It, it says January sixth, twenty-twenty-two?
No, it's email from Jerry to Susie, town of Ennis, December twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one.
It's mine is, mine is dated Thursday, January sixth, twenty-twenty-two.
I'm looking at.
Town of Ennis application?
No. Yeah. 初始用 permit applications. Came from Jerry to Susie.
Yep.
On, mine says December twenty-seven.
This one is to Johnson and Western Roots.
You're looking at two different things.
I'm sorry, I'm not finding that on the packet I was given, so I'm not sure what's.
Can you show this?
I, I have that one. But I don't see December twenty-seventh or twenty-one.
Got a question for Jim.
Yes, sir.
The zoning regulations, uh, and they've been out since February twenty-seventeen. Are they available to the public?
Yes. Well, it's on, it's on the website. There are copies available.
Kind of the holy grail of what we're discussing this year.
Yes.
It looks like not many people have done their homework on it.
That's possible.
That's why I asked, yeah. But I just asked the wrong word. CCMS.
And there's also, there's also some confusion, I believe, you know, from.
Or is that one you got from before?
Before, yeah.
If, if I'm CC'd on it, I can.
No, you weren't CC'd. That's why I didn't know if subsequently got forwarded to you or not.
Oh, okay, so, so what's in that? No, I did not get that particular thing. What I got was what is where exhibit B, because I'm addressed here. And it says, oh, it's John Smith, I think maybe it's.
Okay, does it cover?
Yeah, it's a copy and paste of, yeah, I think, I mean, I'm just.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yours too.
And then you'll see, um, here, I responded. Have a chance to remove yours, but like, so time discussion, but inside available.
What I want to know is, did you receive anything that says this?
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, this has been.
Can you tell me why you pursued that angle? And being a novice, it just seems like that would have ended though.
That was prior to that being submitted application.
Oh, wow. Point me to that again, I'm apologize. Yeah, she has a packet that I just forwarded the whole string to, but, um, that was, it's not as big a package, you don't have it. Oh, okay, here. Right, okay, yeah, no, that isn't one. You do have, yeah, it was copied and pasted into a later document.
Different date, okay.
And so I guess in order to address that, so that was when we were in the thick of this, permitting, that point, the clients have expended quite a bit more money and resources than they had expected based on their earlier discussions, but at the time of doing the due diligence on the property. And, um, because it had been so clearly laid out to them initially that a car wash could be permitted there and that there was flexibility under the TND overlay district, we wanted to see the process through with the applications before putting in another application with the process also uncertain. And if you like going back and like reviewing, sorry, you know, so, okay, you know, following, following through, I guess.
Wanted to be sure you, you have that. So let's move forward, you got another.
No, you're good, Josh. Josh, are you ready?
Sure.
So if you want to go ahead and just give your testimony?
Okay, so when Tonya and Tyler came to me and looking at the lot, asking if it was acceptable for a car wash, I told them that I would like to have them submit the design once that was appropriate and that they would need to get approval from Art Behar, the zoning administrator, and to talk to Mr. Kelly Elser regarding the water and sewer. During that time, I had a conversation with Mr. Behar, asking him if he saw any difficulties in having a car wash on that lot across the street from the Family Dollar. He said, no, it'd be great to have something on that side of town. I think that would be a, a great use of that space. So having had that conversation with him, I relayed that to Tyler and Tonya, and, um, asked if they'd spoken with Mr. Elser regarding the water and sewer. They said they had. And with that, they moved forward and purchased a lot. The permitting process at that point of time was very informal and straightforward. The zoning application had a spot for a site map to check the setbacks were in compliance with the zoning and a building height to make sure that fit with the zoning. And if all of those were in compliance and you paid your fee for the water and sewer hookup, the permit was granted. That typically took somewhere between five and twenty minutes. So based on that experience and information that I had, um, I kind of relayed that to Tonya and Tyler, and they moved forward from there. The, kind of the backstory and history of North Forty is when we started, we originally had the idea to have, um, a work-live, more mixed-use community, which is why we had a lot of the CCR zoned, um, on the northern portion of the property, especially along the highway. And then the two thousand seven Great Recession hit, and that kind of all went out the window, uh, for a number of reasons. But we then kind of refocused. And we're approached by the Family Dollar and actually broke out that parcel, the one acre parcel that they are on, as well as a lot that's, uh, in question here today. So as we kind of moved through time, we had to adapt to where the economy was. And the local retail seemed like a good fit for that part of the development. The, the reason we selected the CCR zoning in the first place was because it did have the flexibility, um, with the TND overlay to accommodate most projects, um, that we, we thought might go in there. All I have, um, just, you know, kind of going back to the permitting process at the time, I felt that they, they could have probably had a permit in hand whenever they wanted, based on my conversations with everyone at town. Any questions for me? If you're talking, I can't hear you.
All right. Josh, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
I can hear you now.
Okay, uh, let me just back up. So what I was saying is, is everything that has been presented today seems like a lot of hearsay. I'm not saying anybody's lying, but you have to hear it from our side, which was the reason why I asked Mr. Johnson whether he had physical, anything that he signed at closing or anything else. The answer is no. Our other colleague brought up the point that it's public knowledge what the zoning is, yet nobody looked at it. If, if Mr. Behar said this, could we get his testimony? I mean, I, I don't know. I'm asking our, our town attorney, can, is he still available to say, yes, he said this? No, he didn't? Or is that even relevant? Because they keep coming back to this.
And I, I.
And I, and I'm, and I'm.
Go ahead, Jim, and then I'll fill in.
Okay. The, the board has broad powers. You could continue this. I don't know that you could issue a subpoena. Um, you know, you could ask for other, I, I guess you could, you could ask. It's, it's really, you know, let's, we'll look at, you know, the general, uh, governing rules right here at the outset. It states that basically town attorney can answer some of these questions for you.
Okay.
So you're asking, you know, would, uh, Judge Behar be available? Would he come in here and testify? I guess someone would have to ask him to be a witness, and you'd have to continue your hearing for that purpose.
Okay. Well, I mean, understand that everything that, this is all hinging on Mr. Behar's statement to the, to the party of, of what they could and could not do with that land.
Well, and I.
Well, let me just, let me, let me just clarify. But, well, the, the question that you have to answer is whether the zoning administrator's determination was an error. That's, that's the nature of this, that's the nature of the appeal.
Okay.
So one of, one of the questions I have is, um, and Susie, you, as you came into this, you were working with Art in the transition. Did you discuss with him the application?
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
My own?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay.
So as you're going through the, um, change and taking over the responsibility, did you discuss with Art this application? Cause I know there was continual conversations as you were coming into the role.
No.
Okay.
Did, were there, was there a file? Were there any notes? Was there anything that was provided to you that had transpired up until that point?
No. If I, my, I think two part of why we bring up, and it is, I absolutely hearsay. I'm not going to say that, that is anything that can be factually weighed upon, but it's to explain the particular circumstances of this permit where we find ourselves today. And, uh, that, you know, based on what had been represented to the clients prior to my involvement and then once I became involved, we looked to do it through the existing zoning and permitting process. But when. When I was initially working with permitting, and at that time, Mr. Bahar was still in place, and then it transitioned over to Susie, there weren't forms to be used. And a lot of what was relied upon was what we were told, this is what you need to do. And when I had questioned, and not on this permit, but in the prior ones, where I was working directly with Mr. Bahar, that this doesn't seem to be what is in the code, it was, don't worry about it, this is what you need. And so, and, and again, and, and that is, you know, can kind of bear itself out if we wanted to fact check it in the first permit that I applied for with My Willow, because it was a little bit, it would, now I look back on it, it was kind of gobbledygook, but it was gobbledygook because that was how we were told to submit it. And so I can say, hey, I don't think this is in accord with your code, but I am not the enforcer of your code. I am there to do what is. To do and/or clients who are not represented by council are told to do. And say, this is the process we follow.
So I have another question for you. Does the TND overlay supersede the, the zoning regulations?
They have to be read together. And, uh, I think Susie indicates in her staff report that if you look at eleven dash three C dash two C, which is the third paragraph down on top of page five, it's, it's the one that's quoted, so it's indented, okay?
So where are we again?
That, okay, so.
Oh, Susie.
Susie's staff report quotes the language straight out of the zoning code.
Okay.
Or you could look at it in the zoning code at eleven dash three C dash two C. Uses permitted and conditional uses shall be those specified in the underlying zoning district. Now, you could continue to read it, but if you're asking me. Now, you could continue to read it, but if you're asking me my interpretation, we're going to just get into a legal argument between me and Breann. Because she's already stated, her argument is that the second part of that controls the first part. I don't see it that way. And in fact, I don't see anything in the TND that expands or allows additional uses. Other than in the underlying zone, which is why it's called, it's, it'd be equivalent in my mind to answer your question. It, it would be the equivalent of if somebody came in and said, I want to do this, but there's a flood zone overlay. Okay, so you'd have to comply with the flood zone, right? It's an overlay, but the flood zone is an overlay. It overlays, it lays on top of the zoning district. It doesn't change anything in the, right. It does not expand what's allowed or permitted in the district.
And I may not argue with you, because we don't. One of the things where, I mean, I think it's well known that your code is a little. It's missing a little bit. It's a little nonspecific. And so when you have those kinds of ambiguities or where there's room for interpretation. Normally what we would do is we would look at prior projects, findings of fact, conclusions, staff reports, so determine if it would be worth going forward. On something like this, but as I said, none of that exists. So I mean, this would be, I guess you can kind of say, you know, the case of first impression. So this is where, where, you know, the town is having the opportunity to put rubber to the road on how that TND overlay actually operates. And we are running that case of the cycle, as it were.
And to throw something else in there for everyone's consideration, because it is a small town, I understand that. You know, the nature of the zoning board is to do fairness. I mean, that's why you have the ability to hear an appeal and overturn it. Or modify it, make some other decision, right? What you really want to be mindful though, is of doing something that you don't have jurisdiction to do. But doesn't mean that there can't be a solution for everybody. And so if you went back and you looked at. Susie's determination, April 22 determination, I believe she cites the ability for the applicant, appellant, landowner. To proceed with his own change amendment, site specific, town code allows for that. This board does not have the ability to do that. Correct.
And is that?
It's, it's, it's in the law. It's in your, it's in the town code. I, I really can't speak to, I don't know.
Breann, do you have any closing statements? I do. So. So in, on tabs two and three of the binders I provided for you. I have a set of proposed conditions that the, if you were to allow for modification or basically, I'm not entirely sure exactly how it would go, but. This would be the proposed solution for maybe how this could be done. And so under tab two is the proposed conditions and what I have done in there is I took these from the staff report. Done for a granted permit by the commission for my Willow condo project. There are some standard conditions and also from some of my decisions previously, how we got to those conditions when Alice Hollo was the planner. In the proposed conditions, one through. One through three essentially are not from. Conditions I took from another project because they are specific to this particular project. And I have addressed the feedback we had gotten from Forrest Mandeville. And that is his letter from December 21 to 21 that's at tab four. And in that he called out where he saw problems with the plan that was provided. And so the proposed conditions would include a revised site plan. That would be submitted with the names and locations of adjacent streets, alleys and other properties. The site plan was missing the. Names and locations of the other properties. Location of parking and how it will be screened. Parking is in there, but there was no description of how it would be screened. Show traffic circulation into and out of the car wash, phase and vacuum access areas. We did ultimately update the site plan to include that. That is in. The application package you have at tab seven. Specific car wash bay dimensions, there was the overall building to, to show the building footprint, but not each individual bay within the building that could be updated. Location and screening of the trash enclosure, we had not provided a specific description on that, other than just its location. And landscaping and screening of the site compliance with the town code, landscaping and screening requirements of the code. The second condition would be owners would supply a TND agreement for approval by the town. That TND agreement is appears or proposed TND agreement appears at tab. Three, and that is based off of a form. That was provided to me by the town for doing TND agreements that was used by Willie's Distillery for one of their projects. So it's not a form that's readily available on the town's website. And then. The car wash project, condition three would be that the car wash project would be constructed and maintained in accordance with the revised site plan as submitted. And then all the rest of that is about the other conditions, parking and DEQ approval and. Landscaping that are the standard conditions that have been issued on prior permits that I have gotten from the town. I think I ticked all the things off in the code. I might've missed things. I'm not planner.
Jim. And I appreciate this, right? But this is not in our.
No, sorry. You, this zoning board of adjustment does not have the authority to issue a special. Exception or commonly known as a conditional use permit. And conditional use permits are reviewed and issued by the town commission or council.
And what I, why I'm presenting that to you is not because that's what I want you to issue or that I think you have the power to issue it. I'm saying that there is a process for, I think, where this could be. Be done. If this, you were to vote to modify, to have the decision of the administrator modify and then send back.
Say that again.
Do you have the ability to approve, deny or modify? And so my request would be is that you request that the zoning administrator modify their denial. To allow for the project and then this would be what would be presented to the town commission for approval. So yeah, I'm, I'm not asking you guys to approve. I just wanted to give you a sample so you could kind of see like, how would we do this? And this is what I, it just is for example, and this is not because I want you to say, oh yeah, do that.
But you could also ask the town council to amend.
The zone.
The zoning.
Right, which is a whole separate.
Separate.
Application procedure.
Right, okay, all right. So. Sorry, Susie. You're going to have to come back up. So as you, when you reviewed the application. Counselor Tyler said, a drive-through is not allowed. In CCR. So did you review that or consider that as neither is a car wash, but it's still there? As an exception? Even though car wash isn't listed. Drive-through isn't listed. How would a drive-through get approval to come in, granted before your time, but. Did you look at it as it's not there, but it's, it's obviously there. It's not in the code, but it's allowed.
But it's been implemented.
Right.
Yeah. Well, it's not a permit I issued, so I can't, I can't fully see what the CCR allows. I don't know. I haven't pulled that file to see what, how they did it.
Right.
But I think the CCR is listed.
Yeah, I'm looking at what's allowed.
Right.
Right, but and obviously there's a lot that's not included on here. So did you just, did you look at this and say, car wash isn't here, so I'm not going to allow?
No, there's actually definitions in the front of the chapter that also helps clarify what is allowed. So that's the first thing I do when I get a permit is to see if it falls in there. If not, I go through the definitions to see where it is allowed. And I, I can't answer what they did for, I'm not finding it. For the drive-through.
Okay.
I have not pulled that permit to see how they did it. Sometimes there's notes in there. I definitely, you know.
So, okay, so then my second question is. Under essential services. And somebody brought this up about the requirement of the guides to wash their boats after they float.
Well, there's a definition in my staff report of essential services.
No, but did you consider the fact that the guides have to wash their boats after they float? And if the current car wash is down more than it's up. Did you view that, did you consider that in your determination?
Not in that respect, no.
Okay.
And, and if I'm correct, the zoning for this land would allow for central services, correct?
In the conditional use.
In the conditional use.
Yes.
Okay.
Essential and second thing too, essential services are defined in the definitions part of the code. Auto. Automobile, anything auto facilities, those are not.
Essentials are public utilities, for example.
Right, but our economy is based on.
Fishing and.
Essential services to have those boats.
It does say that public utility corporation and privately owned infrastructure and service facilities that serve common neighborhood, community or regional interests. And that's not further drilled down as a definition, so I don't know exactly how that.
How did you determine, Susie, that, that you lumped a car wash in with automotive repair?
Automotive services.
Or auto.
It's listed.
It is. As, as automotive services, I'm sorry. I thought, I thought it was repair.
Under standards for certain uses, section 11 dash four dash two B, automotive services include the. Repair, washing, fueling, some of related activities.
Can I ask a clarifying question, Jim? So under 11, four, right, 11, four, one, under general provisions, right? It's just what Chuck just said. How does, where does general provisions fall? Is that the, is that the baseline for everything and then the zoning is on top of that?
Again, these have to be read in connection with each other. And before you would get to 11 dash four, you'd have to first define what is the use. Okay, so you'd do that by looking at the definition sections. So that's where you would determine whether it fits better as a automotive service facility or is it an essential service?
Okay.
The standards for certain uses and structures, these are just further specific design or building requirements for the. The uses that are called out in here.
So you'd, so you'd, you'd go for the conditional use or the permit or conditional use and then.
Then you make, then you would look, right, then you would look for specific design standards that might apply. And then you'd look for any overlay districts that also might apply.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
And what I'm thinking in the CCR though, as Tyler pointed out, has possibly, membership clubs are allowed in the CCR. That is a.
So it could be any business.
It could be, and I'm not using this as a threat. I'm just saying, I know it was something that they did in Missoula to get around the smoking ban. Is they made all of the strip clubs gentlemen clubs, so people can continue to smoke in strip clubs. And people, I mean, the stripping was there. And I. This is one of the frustrations. Is to switch back and forth between what is contained in the definition section and then what is described under each particular use. And then subsequent uses to terms in other parts of the code that led to ambiguity. Because in part of the code that you cited about the specific structures. It says automobile facilities include repair and washing facilities. That is the only place where wash comes up in relation to automobiles. There is no car wash, there's no auto, mat, no, no other sort of term. No part of the. Different zoning regulations specifically address auto washing facilities. Highway commercial, which would be the next bump up in zoning from CCR, says that service stations, automobile and truck repair garages are allowed. But it does not say auto washing facilities and there is not a single part in the descriptions of what are permitted uses. In any of the code areas that say auto washing facilities. It just says both in the, excuse me, highway, commercial and commercial industrial says the same thing. Service stations, automobile and truck repair garages. So there's.
So, so what, what I.
We don't really address the car wash.
What, what, what I'm understanding, and correct me for mom, Mr. Greenbaum, is there are, there are some options of different language on this business. Am I, am I not, not hearing this correctly?
I'm not fully understanding. I mean, if, are you referring to the argument that's just been presented tonight about it could possibly be a membership club?
Yes, sir.
So in my mind, the first thing that comes to mind is something like the Elks Lions Club, right? Not the, not, I mean, possibly.
With that being said, gentlemen, Fillings, Osmen, all those places, you buy monthly card.
I, I, I subscribe to the new one.
You did. So that was the initial plan when we came here and that was where. Bahar, I get it, my name's messed up, I apologize. Bahar is originally when he said that's where the direction he would. Because we, that was when we initially spoke about having that club. I mean, the part about that membership that you pay for, the other neat part is you can do like, say, the sports programs. Everybody gets their car washed and buys this pass percentage goes to the program. It's all in the system. It's all, that's the monthly.
That said, membership club is not defined in the definition section of that. It only appears in the descriptions of permitted uses for certain use of areas.
So. From that standpoint too, I would, I would say that, you know, again, you'd look for what does it fit and look at common, common understanding, you know, if something's not defined. So is Costco a membership club? Yes. But is it also a retail establishment? Right, sales. So you try to find the thing that, that it fits first best.
Retail stores are also allowed under CCR as a permitted use.
And the permit wasn't for that, it was for a car wash.
Would it, would a, would a detail shop fit in there, Susie? I'm just throwing mud at the wall.
It got brought to our attention as well to make this easier CCR. And this is this one that's funny to you guys. Okay, you say a service shop. Highway commercials with the other ones under, and CCR says people repair. And that has a coil changer.
Is the other one even in the town?
Well, it is in, it is zone and yes, it is.
It is so.
It's in, but it's in a different zoning classification. I can't remember if it's, I think it's, or it's highway, commercial, commercial industrial.
Susie.
Yes.
If it were a classified as a detail shop business, would that fly under the zoning?
You'd have to have it staffed for it to be a detail shop. That's not their intent. Detailing cars. Detailing cars. I'm really frustrated, I would love to find a way to make this happen. But our job here today is to determine, correct me if I'm wrong, if the, if Suzy has correctly, um, stated her findings. And there's a very, I think she makes a very good case that, and backs it up. Now, I realize it's erroneous that there was no official application in July of twenty-one. That's not a contest. She states that it was based on the sign issue that she advised that there was no, that it was not in compliance with zoning. I don't think that's a contest, there was no application, so the appeal time didn't start. It started when you made application and had it denied.
You can, the, the board can make that determination at some point.
That.
The board could make a determination that, uh, but there's nothing in the zoning code that requires an application to be pending for a zoning determination to be made.
There, there's so much conflict in what was said, what's in the zoning code, what was documented. It's.
My head hurts.
Yeah. Um, and my nature is to try and be a problem solver, but that's not my job here today. Is it reasonable to continue this?
You, if you close the hearing, then you would have to render a decision within thirty days based on what was presented here.
Okay.
Now, sometimes, uh, they'll leave the record open based on a request from applicants. You know, we'd like to supplement with, and you'd leave the record open for another seven days, perhaps, or ten days, but the, you'd have to allow the town to respond to that, or the zoning administrator to respond.
If, but, correct me if I'm wrong, too, that if we continue this on, or we close it, and we have thirty days to render a decision.
Or you can continue.
But, but we can't talk without.
No, you're not supposed, you're not, you're seriously not supposed to meet without.
We can schedule a meeting.
You can schedule a meeting, you could actually, yes.
But it's not going to happen within seventy days.
Because we have to, we have to have a public.
There's a public hearing start at six fifteen, so, but you're not required, you're required to make a determination within thirty days from when you close the record.
So, Mike, I understand that, but, but we can't talk as a group once we walk out of the building?
No.
No.
And then we have, so we have to make the decision on our own and then vote, okay?
We have to make a decision.
Well, you should have, you should have a discussion as a board before there's any, any vote. And your discussion should, uh, seek to provide application of everything that you've heard and seen and read, right? And then you would want to make your specific findings based on what is in the record.
So, so it's either we approve the appeal, we deny the appeal, or we do a modification, right?
Right.
What does a modification mean?
Well, it states, I, and I don't think, I'm going to get any argument from Brianna on this one, is that you can render a determination as if you were the zoning administrator. In other words, you can, you can make whatever, you can make a determination as if you were the administrator.
But we have to find a reason to.
Yeah, well.
A legal reason, we can't just say this.
Yes, you, you want, you want to have your discussion, then provide your basis of your findings of fact, apply whatever reasoning, and then render your, um, ruling.
Well, let me start with that. On this page here, it says, government, public utility corporation, and privately owned infrastructure and service facilities that serve common neighborhood, community, or regional interests, including, for example, utility lines, fire stations, storm drainage systems, sewage treatment plants, electric transmission systems. That lot's not big enough to serve much of that. I've had issues with this car wash, I drive to Bozeman back and forth every day, my truck is a filthy mess in winter, my hose lines at home are frozen, I can't wash my truck. I just followed a hatchback today where a car was so dirty on the back end, you can't read the license plate. That could get you pulled over, even if you're not doing anything wrong, they want to read that plate. I think it is of neighborhood interest, regional interest with law enforcement, to have some clean vehicles on the road. Safety, when clean windshields, clean windows, clean mirrors, license plates that are readable, that aren't covered in slush and mud and gunk and everything else from the road, I kind of see a car wash fitting in, in this section here. Maybe I'm wrong, but that's how I see it.
It's also beautification, it keeps the town looking good with the clean cars.
So, from a procedural standpoint, I think what you need to do is either close testimony or continue to hear further testimony. But at some point, you're going to want to have a discussion.
Right.
Right.
And this is where your board, right, so you're, it looks like you're leading into discussion, but from a procedural standpoint, you, you need to make that a part of your record here.
Do you have any further testimony you want to present? Mr. Johnson, Suzy.
Sure.
It's true, she did not get a factual rebuttal. And, and then after all of that is, uh, concluded, you need to ask if there's anybody in the public who has not spoken who would care to comment. We could open up the doors and shout down Main Street.
So, um, I don't feel that my decision was wrong. I will stand behind that, that it doesn't fall under the CCR. And the conditions that, um, Brianna was talking about in section two and three, those are the conditions and the performance standards that fall under the T and D overlay, which, if it's approved, a permit's approved under the conditions, C, CUP, um, those fall into play. And I can't be held accountable for previous zoning administrators.
You can't.
And they made it pretty clear to me that the standards that were done prior to me were not going to be acceptable any farther. And I will agree that, um, Tyler and Tanya fell into the slot in a poor time, that it was, um, I was very new. But it went to the county, and they made the same decision that I did. And so did our on-call planner, and so did Cushing Terrill. And those are planners with a lot more experience and a lot more knowledge than I have. But I think there is a solution, um, that maybe could be looked at if the applicant wishes to. There's a zone text amendment, um, you know, there was talks about changing the zoning, and that would be called spot zoning. That's highly discouraged from being done. What we can do, you know, you could look into a zone text amendment, and there is, to answer Brianna's question, there is one that's going through it now. Um, and yes, it is the first time we've done it, so it's going to be rocky, but we still won't be the holders.
And this is, I just pull up, and on the, what is allowed in our particulars of the legislation?
Yeah.
Is that as far?
Yeah. So, um, and that's, you know, a good solution, I think, for, yes, we all would like to have a, a car wash, but I have to follow the zoning code as it's laid out in front of me.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thanks, Suzy.
Sure, go ahead, go ahead, Joe.
I was going to ask Jim just a minute ago, uh, so it is possible to tweak the zoning rules and regulations. What kind of a time span are we looking at if, if we request something like that?
I, I don't, um, no, it's not, it's not, you're not changing an ordinance, it's not adopting a new ordinance. It's, um, it's, it's an interesting process, and it is, um, outlined back here.
In the back of the.
Yeah.
Chapter eleven four. Don't change application under eleven dash five dash three, so the zoning or zoning tax change. So, this would be the same application used if you wanted to change particular language under a certain portion of the zoning code, or if you wanted to request that the zoning code particular law be changed, is that right? It's the same application. And is there a?
There is one, yeah.
And then there's one, there is. There's a line for.
That's eleven dash five dash three, right?
Yes.
But it doesn't say, so this, this gets filed in the town.
Right.
And then it goes to Suzy.
Correct.
Once the, the amendment is done, then unfortunately, it has to go through the permitting process.
Right, the way I understand it, without, um, answering your exact time schedules on here, my understanding is that you have to submit for a zone text amendment. The zoning administrator would look at that, see if it is complete. Then it would be scheduled before the town commission. They could approve it, and it would, as I understand it, it would be an application to allow a car wash, you know, as a conditional use, in, in that zone.
Does this board have any influence and maybe recommend, recommend?
Whatever you decide you're going to, if, if that's, if that's the direction that the board was going to go in, then that would be part of your findings, and you, you'd elaborate on that as best as possible.
And the chairman has to report out tonight on our findings.
It might be, we didn't find anything yet, we're still looking.
Right, but I'm saying.
Yeah, that's on, it's on the public meeting agenda for an update, they just, it's for an update. It's not for, obviously, you cannot actually give a formal determination until you've issued one.
Yeah, it's up to them to make.
Right, so you could just basically inform the commission, what happened here tonight, in, in a general sense.
I, I think.
And I heard.
Unless, unless you reach a determination right here.
I heard the zoning administrator say, correct me if I'm wrong, that a recommended solution to this appeal is for the applicant to file a zoning text amendment.
A possible solution, I may have said the word, yeah, a possible solution.
But not a room.
It's only, yes, thank you. I mean, it's entirely up to the applicant, it's not up to me.
And I, and I should correct what I, I said earlier. So, it does state, may amend the zoning ordinance after following procedure that is outlined in the ordinance and in this application spot. So, it would be an amendment to the code.
And would it have to go before?
It would be.
A reading and then a second reading?
Second reading.
Okay.
But that, that can be accomplished fairly quickly.
In a month.
Or, or the other option that I heard, and maybe this is not an option, is to change the nature of the business to a membership business. And, and stop calling it a, a car wash.
I think the issue there is, membership means that if somebody's, somebody's going to have to sign up to use the service, so you're going to have to collect information.
You do up in Bozeman, I belong to that big fancy.
But I'm talking about people that are just driving through, that want to get the car washed.
It doesn't have to be, to, in my knowledge, to what I've done on research in coding, what I've been told, that if membership doesn't mean everybody membership, it is a membership available. Because, I mean, just like, a gentleman's, you don't have, have a membership to go into it, but they allow memberships to be there. I'm not, she just said that, or cost, you, you can come in as a temporary without the membership. You can come in and try the place for, what is it, twenty days?
You can come in with a gift card.
So, I don't want, I don't want to belabor the point, I just want to know, from you, um, Mr. Greenbaum, if that is a, if that is an option to, to change the nature of the business to fit the zoning, the current zoning as it is now, and not go through a zoning.
You'd have to find that the administrator's determination that a car wash is not a permitted use was an error, and that this use is best described as a membership club.
And that's not the nature of the.
Even though it was never part of.
The original application.
Yeah.
And it's not part of the appeal.
It was not.
And then they would have to refile your application under a membership club. Right, and then, and then go through that process, which could take thirty days.
Are we done, we, we, is there anyone present in the audience that would like to speak that hasn't spoken?
I need a drink.
Okay, then I.
I thought that was her name, Anita Drake. It's an odd last name.
You don't get just one, you've got to provide for everybody. So, can we close the meeting now?
You can close your hearing, uh, close the testimony portion.
Okay.
You could then adjourn, you could continue, you could move towards discussion. And if you're not able to reach a determination, then you would continue your discussion at a later time.
But we have to make that decision.
That has to be public.
No.
We have to, we have to vote on it.
No, we don't have to vote on it tonight, we can schedule another meeting to continue our discussion.
So, let's do a closing meeting.
We've closed the testimony portion, now we're moving into discussion. Joe, what do you have, what are your thoughts?
Under the current law, I have to do a write, bit, unless I need support.
So.
I mean.
Uphold, overturn, or modify, are you in favor of modifying?
Sure, I'm in favor, I, I'd be the first one here to, to, let's see a car wash come in, but under the current guidelines, yeah.
Okay.
Maybe modify, yes.
So, by the letter of the law, I agree with Suzy's determination. And I think that you guys need to talk, and I have written down, file a text amendment with the council or commission, because that will get it through quicker, and I think enough people in town will support that text amendment. And commissioners can approve that a lot faster than anything else would ever.
Christian?
I agree with, with Suzy's finding, I mean, there is no, it's pretty black and white, um, as disappointing as it is, I too want your car wash, uh, but we have to follow the law, I'm up for, I'm, I'm up for the legal way to find a way for you to get your, your car washed, and that's, that's where I stand. And I don't know what that is. So, I, I can't make a decision tonight.
I believe Suzy's done a good job, every consultant that she depends on to guide her, to give her the best information possible, to protect what's already in place. But my vote would be to modify the decision based on her closing comments that a possible solution is a zoning text amendment, it seems to be the most expeditious, and, um, can move this process forward. That's, those are my thoughts. I also like your idea that that law is not.
It's not suitable for very much of anything else. I'd like to say, from what I've just witnessed here today, I don't think Mr. Johnson or Ms. Mullen came in with any ill intent to, you know, come in and say, "I want to do one thing and do another." I think they've done their homework to the best of their ability, they talked to town officials, they talked to the honorable Judge Behar, um, they talked to the then Town Public Works Administrator. They said they wanted a car wash, they bought a lot under the pretenses of it being a car wash. Their realtor was under the pretenses that a car wash would fit. I don't think anything was too egregious in that transaction, I don't think, uh, Mr. Vievich would have put himself in any liability and said, "Yes, you could have a car wash here," if he didn't think he could have a car wash there. I think Suzy did her due diligence, I think there's an open window, I think it should be taken. I don't know if we just, you know, table that for another night to put a vote to it. I don't know if we just, you know, table that for another night to put a vote to it. What are your thoughts, Maria?
Well, it seems like we have four people in favor of modification. Is, how do we proceed with that?
Well, it's not, we're not, we're just taking Susie's recommendation, so we're upholding her denial, and we're making the recommendation that they do a text amendment with the council.
So how do we handle that? It's not.
You would, you, okay, so Tony is, sound like you were almost making a motion there for a vote on. So you would state your motion, and then state, state what it is that you're moving, you know, for the board to consider to vote on.
But, but hold on though, is that, is that their only option, is the zoning adjustment? Or, or the?
Well, we can sue.
We don't want them to sue. I, I, I don't want them to sue. I'm saying, you, you've made the determination that that's the quickest way, and I don't disagree. What I'm saying is, isn't there another option? That's what I'm asking everybody, because we have the option to uphold, overturn, or modify, and I keep going back to the modifying on the type of business that we're approving. Can we change the verbiage of the business to get it into, to fit the zone?
Well, that, that would be.
Then they've got to go back and reapply.
Right.
That's not part of their appeal.
Right. Their appeal is that Susie.
I understand that, I'm just asking, I'm not.
Okay, but we have to, we have to respond to the appeal.
So then we don't have the power to modify.
Well, we could ask Susie to go back.
The power, the power of modify would also come from, I mean, this was a basic determination. It's not in this zone, okay?
Understood.
There's not a lot to modify there. I mean, there may be occasions where you have something comes before this board that's, there's multiple layers of determinations and decisions and conditions that have been imposed, and then it comes to you for further review. So you'd say, well, we're gonna, we're gonna reverse this part, we're gonna approve this part, we're gonna modify another part of it, but Chris, I think what you're, you're struggling with is the, the possibility of saying, okay, we're gonna reclassify this business use and make it fit somewhere else.
And I'm asking, I'm not.
Yes, well, again, I mean, you have, you have the power and authority to do a lot of things, and then, of course, it's also subject to appeal, what you do here tonight.
So I'd like to make a motion that, that the board denies the appeal, uphold Susie's, zoning administrator's decision, and, and period. And on a side note, get the appellate to work with the town commission to do a text amendment on CCR on what's allowed and not allowed.
And that would, we would recommend that to the town.
We would recommend that to the town.
Commissioners.
Yeah, to commissioners that they, that they take the text amendment, support it, and approve it.
You seem opposed to that, I can tell by your.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Yeah, I know.
Oh, sorry.
So is that?
That, here's, yes, that's your motion. That, so, so member.
Tony Treglia.
Member, Tony Treglia moves to deny the appeal, uphold the zoning administrator's determination to incorporate in support her staff report of April 22, okay? That would be findings, but I'm putting it into the motion. It's their motion. The board recommends and issues an advisory opinion, determination that the applicant should seek a zone text amendment for a car wash in the CCR zone. That's the stated motion.
And further would support that text amendment, recommend that to the town.
That, that was stated in the motion.
You said that.
That the zoning board, as an advisory opinion, supports and recommends the zone text amendment.
Okay.
Be an advisory. That's the motion.
Is that your motion?
Can I ask a question about it before I?
After it's seconded and it becomes a, and it becomes a motion, then you can discuss it.
Oh, okay, I'll second it. Wow, we're gonna be attorneys by the end of this gig. My question is, and I guess I'm thinking on the emotional side, because you all presented this emotional case, which is just mind blowing to me, that they, anybody would go through this much nonsense. How much more are we putting them through pushing it into this? Because if we deny this, an attorney's next move is to sue the town for their decision. That's not cost effective for this town, and that's the reason why I'm trying to find the, the best avenue for this situation. So what is the timeframe if we do go down this path and we all vote for it? What is it gonna take? They've been at this now for two years. How, how long does it take for them to go through, and what's the process look like? Is it 30 days? Is it 60 days? Is it another 120 days?
So they fill out the form, submit it to the town council, I mean, submit it to the town.
Yes.
Susie reviews it, gives it to the commissioners?
Planning board, I think. Planning board.
Not the text amendment.
I don't know. According to the application that I raised.
Do we have a planning?
We have a planning board.
We're, they're in the process of that, we're in planning board.
That's.
The town council is.
This is better.
The town council is acting as planning board.
Are, are they now?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
All right.
I gotta come.
Shh. I'm just trying to learn all, all of this. Does it make sense where I'm, where I'm going with this?
Yes, it does.
I mean, are, are we just passing the, the buck down the line just to?
We're trying to find a solution.
No, I understand that we're trying to find a solution, but I want to find the right solution that's not gonna be.
But it's either you agree she made the right decision.
I do agree she made the right decision.
So now the solutions are text amendment or reapply under different label, right?
Yeah, and would that be the quickest one? Nobody, I, I don't get an answer on what's the timeframe if they change the nature of the business for legal reasons to get it to fit in that.
That was part of the application from the beginning, you see, I forget where. Just, I know you keep bringing that up.
So, Mr. Greenbaum?
Yes.
Which, which way, in your opinion, is the better way to go? I guess I'm just looking for, for guidance, because I don't.
The quickest resolution for the applicant.
So after the application is deemed complete, goes to planning board, they review it. Notice of public hearing will be published in town's official newspaper at least 15 days prior to the date of the hearing. Applicant will be notified by mail, as of date, time, and location. After the hearing is concluded, the board will make a recommendation. Oh, that's, so you have a public hearing in front of your planning board, and then they might form a recommendation to your town commission. So it'd be two hearings.
And the planning board is the town commission.
Right now. So then, so the town council has approved text amendments.
Happens all the time.
Yeah.
So that's, so that would be the quickest way.
I, I think so.
It's just a matter of when they can get it on their agenda.
Well.
You have to be mindful as well of doing what's correct according to the law.
Well, that's what I'm trying to find, that's why I keep asking you.
Right.
I mean, my emotional side is, has one, you know, there's one decision, but then you have to look at what we can do legally, and that's why I keep asking you, what's the quickest and best way to go forward with this?
And, and you have to realize as well that this may, this may sound odd, but I've seen it happen, where, actually, I was representing a client in New York in a similar type of situation, and I prevailed getting the variance for my client. The town filed an appeal, an appeal to zoning board, its own zoning board, because you're an independent authority.
Well, let's not tell the town.
Yeah.
I would, I would also like to go on record of saying that Susie did an outstanding job. I agreed with 100% of what she laid out.
We all agree.
And Kurt, Kurt brought up a really good point, dirty vehicles. I was in law enforcement for 30 years. You can't read license plates. You boil this thing down to public safety. You can't see taillights, license plate lights, so that would be something that could be tweaked to make it essential from a public safety standpoint.
And then it does fit in the zoning. And that, that's my point, that's why I keep trying to go at this thing and say, how, how do we?
So if we deny, if we.
Then we have to say that Susie's.
Susie's wrong.
Yeah.
And she needs to go back and go through this process again, and re, relook at the application under a different lens.
Well, she did list the businesses that could be there, and based on what a prior peace officer said, that it would fit under that, in my lane of mind, it would fit under that.
The, the only, the only difference is, there's nothing to force a citizen to get their car washed.
I think the verbiage would have to be tweaked a little bit for that to.
Yeah.
But, but, but none of the services that are approved in there are forced services.
No, I know, but if we're saying, we're doing this for public safety, there's nothing that says that person with that, Kurt with his dirty truck, has to get it washed, right?
Yeah, well.
But as a person who wants to wash it, knowing it is dirty, my hoses at home are frozen, this one over here is broken down, where do I go? To Bozeman with?
All right, I get it.
Yeah.
I get it. So, so there's a motion on the table.
And it has been seconded. Is there further discussion? Can we ask questions of the appellate?
I, I don't see why not.
Okay. Priya, would you like to share anything?
Um, briefly. Yeah, yeah, no, I, I don't, because we're already running. Um, I think the, I think the idea, or maybe, and Jim, I would like your advice too, because I think creative thinking is appreciated at this point. Um, where the board may vote to approve with conditions, um, could the board vote to state that they find it falls under the CCR as an essential service, and then it wouldn't have to be reapplied for, it would be then found as meeting the criteria, and one of the conditions is, is that it describes these, that they're supplemental to the application, that it is an essential service, along with the other, whatever conditions that would need to compose to fully permit. I don't know if that is a potential option if we're looking at modification or. My second comment is that it is frustrating to basically, the solution is to go back to the drawing board, and as Susie testified, there is a text amendment pending, it's the first form, and apparently it hasn't been, I just saw Susie, it's like, can I get a copy of that? Um, because it is a, but it hasn't been submitted yet, so we would also be, again, doing, we'd be breaking in the procedure, and as I've just been reading very quickly here, which is not a comprehensive reading, most of the application and the text in the code deals with a zone change versus a zone text amendment, so there's, again, ambiguity in the form. I would, of course, work closely with Susie on what we've put together, but, you know, I, we have, I, what I'm concerned about is that we don't need some type of requirement again, and we're.
Back to square one.
Yeah, yeah.
But we, but there's text amendments that happen in the, in the council meetings that have been approved previously.
That were initiated by the town commission.
Correct, because they're trying to.
Not by, not by applicants.
Right, so they're trying, so, so the process for them to, to do text amendments and approve it has been proven.
For them doing it of their own initiative, not by application, by outside applicant.
And if we're sitting there advising them that they should take this on, then I'm viewing it as part of, you know.
Oh, I, okay, I misinterpreted, I thought you were saying we needed to provide that, so you would be recommending.
No, you, you need to, you need to apply for the text amendment.
Okay.
Or he needs to apply, they need to apply for the text amendment. We're stating, we support this, and we recommend the town council commissioners approve this forthwith.
Yeah, so we can hope that that would happen.
Well, that's in the motion.
That is the motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Or, or we can reclassify the business to fit into the zone.
You'd have to.
Sorry, I keep throwing.
So, so Chris, you'd have to, you'd have to make findings in support, and I don't know how you could do that at this point, because each and every one of you said that Susie's decision was correct, she did a great job. Now you want to go back, and, you know, you're free to do whatever you want, really, but you, now you're gonna have to try to rationalize, rationalize that she was wrong. It's, she should have, she should have considered it an essential service, that it's not a car wash, it's, it's an essential service. You have, you would have to make that determination, that it fits better as an essential service than it would be as.
But how, but how, how would that discount her findings on the other? Because she wasn't looking at it as an essential service. We just discovered that tonight.
Excuse me? She did?
I did, it's my separate word, that I didn't.
Then you did look at it as.
She addressed it.
Yeah.
That it was not an essential service.
She found that it was not an essential service.
So, but we could disagree with that.
Then we say that she did not.
But again, you'd have to rationalize that her determination was wrong, that it, it was better fitting as an essential service or, and not a car wash.
Can we, can we adjourn this and think about this? I, I feel like there's a gun.
Still have 15 minutes.
How long do you need?
If you delay, if you caught, if you adjourn this for another 30 days, you're just causing them further delay. Although, in that time period, I mean, you could start with a zone text amendment tomorrow.
I'm talking about here, adjourns so we can go, can I go, I mean.
You can't talk to any of us outside.
Can I talk to you?
And, and we have to be out here at 6:00.
You could talk to me on process, it's, it's not fair to discuss substance.
Okay, all right. I say we lobby the commission for this.
Do what?
Lobby the commissioners for this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, they have put us in place to do that job for them.
Okay.
And to me, that's my understanding, that they're dependent.
We opened up a new window tonight, you know, I, I think it's essential. I know how dirty I, my vehicle gets, and I can't wash at home during winter.
I think it's actually, I think it's actually on the agenda for the commission also.
Yeah.
An update, just to give them an update.
Yeah.
So we can recommend to them, we can, we can.
Help.
Help their, their, their cause for this text amendment.
Yes.
You need to have a vote on your motion or table a motion or.
Let's, let's, let's vote.
Let's vote.
So is there any more discussion?
I second the motion.
Is there any more discussion among the board? Okay, call for the vote. Chuck?
Yay.
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 Motion passed.
There you have it.
All right, I'll turn my mic off.
You would close the meeting and, you know, issue a determination, as Susie could get you a determination, she'll draft that up for you, which means she'll be calling me.
Well, I can tell, I can tell some of her writings, oh, we gotta adjourn the meeting.
Before you leave.
We have to, secretary.
I think you need to adjourn.
I think, oh, I think, sorry, I voted adjourned.
It's closed, the meeting's closed. Call in favor.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Meeting adjourned.
So on your next agenda for your next meeting, you need to appoint a secretary, because in the biologue, it says, me or an appointee.
You appointed me last time. I, I will write them, but you're the secretary.
No.
Yes.
You don't have time to be the secretary.
I will write the minutes, you're the secretary.
I thought you did a great job.
Legal advice. Lee County, Florida.
Oh, Florida, that's, no, so that's like 12 years ago.
Lee High Acres. Does that mean anything to you?
So should I stick around for the next three hours?
As your call.
My deceased husband's.
I do.
Car still owns two lots. He never perfected the deeds, he's an only child.
Oh, you're welcome.
He left everything to his son, which is cool.
Wait, wait, okay, we can back up.
My deceased husband is Kurt.
Your husband? Yeah, start there now.
Yeah, start there now.
My deceased husband Kurt inherited two lots from his deceased parents, okay?
But he inherited property, there was a need to distribute.
No.
This conference will now be recorded.
All right, so we're going to begin with the public hearing, first reading of proposed amendment to Title X, water and sewer to divine bulk water for the purpose of setting fees with a vote to adopt at first reading. Was there any public comment submitted to the town? No. Public comment? So I, I guess I could say that as we were looking at bulk water sales, we'd found in the town code that there was no definition to bulk water, so therefore unable to sell bulk water properly. So we have clarified with definition and set fees for those that use it. This is usually industrials that use it for various applications, usually when you're running optic lines, stuff like that, drilling. So we, I can't remember what we saw anyway. Remember what we sold last year?
Oh, about a hundred and eighty thousand gallons.
So, now we're all on track cleaning up the code. That's where it's at, so. I guess public comment, call number two. Number three? Anything from online? But there's nobody online. All right, closing the public hearing. And we can vote to adopt first reading? Motion.
I made a motion to adopt.
There's a motion?
Nikki, hang on seconds.
I second that.
You, you starting that? All right, well, why don't we start with you tonight, Cory, since we don't start with you very often?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, first reading passes. Now we can officially move on to opening our regular meeting. With roll call, Tina? Nikki?
Yeah.
Brandy?
Here.
Christie, Christie's absent, and Cory's here. All right, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Approval of minutes from the May twelfth meeting.
I made a motion to approve of minutes May twelfth.
Tina seconds the motion. And you're first up for vote.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, on to approval of minutes of May nineteenth meeting.
Making motion to approve of minutes of May nineteenth.
I second.
Cory's got the second. Nikki, you're up. Aye. Cory?
Aye.
Tina? All right. Onto planning board formation. So I know we've thrown a lot of names out, but we are still too short. I have contacted the county for their, one that they need to designate as well. That is where we're at. No.
Who do we have interested?
We didn't have any interested. We threw names out and hope-
Okay, what names? Okay, did any of them agree?
Yes, Cory did. He's in the room. We have Jeremy Ramirez, and then Sean will be the portion from the staff. Sean? From public, O'Donnell, from Public Works. He has previous experience, so. Will be a very happy addition. And then a member from the council also needs to choose to be on there. Not, not everybody at once.
Probably Christie, since she's not here.
No nominating Christie while she's not here.
I like that deal.
But is there discussion amongst any of you that? Brandy, you served previously on the planning board.
I did.
Experience right now.
You and Christie arm wrestle for that position, or? Oh, come on, Cory.
I second that.
You're always up for a new challenge. So other names that were thrown out, but we, I don't know. What do we got? Mark Odegaard. Rita Owens. Yes? Okay, perfect. And then I will follow up with Leona. She used to do-
Oh, yeah, Leona would be really good.
Leona would be amazing. So we'll try those two and see if we can finalize, and then we'll have to choose from the council for our last position.
Yes. Do you believe, we used to meet on Wednesdays? Evening.
Can we get clarification on, I know this is generally my job, but I'm heading that way to go get the town code, I don't have it out here. But can we get clarification on the record of planning board, its function, and how it is composed?
So, planning board, town code can't supersede Montana code. Montana code requires seven members. And it designates where those seven members must come from. One is a city council member. One is appointed by the county commissioners. One may be a portion of staff. The other four are, two are appointed by council, and two are appointed by mayor. Two must be within city limits, two may be within the one mile radius of, well, the planning jurisdiction of the town. So that's the seven and how it's comprised. So, planning board, and how would we describe, Brandy, how would you describe since you've been there, their function?
Um, basically, I don't know, we didn't really function very well as a planning board. It wasn't a great experience.
Don't, do not sell them this. It was all a while ago.
It was a while ago.
More experience.
Basically, okay, so one of the things that the planning board would be kind of overseeing would be helping the commission nitpick through the master plan. Because that was, you're, you're doing that, that's going to be part of your responsibilities, is to determine what portions of that are good and feasible, and what portions of it are not.
They also reviews, review some of the conditional use permits.
Yes, they do. We didn't have any of that.
And at the time, there, there weren't nearly as many as there are now.
Yeah.
There's several more than there, lots more than there used to be. So they would do an initial review of those conditional use permits and then provide-
A recommendation.
To the council rather than us going through the whole process ourselves. So as we're getting more and more going on in town, having that planning board to fill the void and get us on track. And then especially some recommendations I would expect to see from a planning board as we move into zoning rewrite probably next-
Yeah.
This fall. We'll go into drafts and then finalizing in the spring is the plan. So that's basic function of planning board. And then help with review of any subdivision annexations, things of that nature. Yes.
I don't want to deter you.
He's our point, appointed.
He does.
And he does live in town, so. Double bonus, experience, lives in town, and said yes.
So we're just looking, we're looking for two more?
Two more, so. We can do either. At this point. All right, so I'll contact Leona and you draw another term. Cut. Tara.
Did she not say her husband is willing to be on it as well?
And a pair, and if they're both willing, then that would be amazing. All right.
Citizen members. No, just, I'm just reiterating that in case there are any citizens out there that would. Because we, I mean, we just had a very successful zoning board hearing as the result of five citizen volunteers. It's really important that community, I mean, you know, members get involved in this stuff.
Is there a conflict if somebody in that board wanted to be on the local?
No.
No. We asked them all, they were all like meh. I couldn't drag Tony kicking and screaming, is what-
The end's full.
The end's full. All right. So we'll keep it up there, but two isn't that far, so two and one of the commission. Once upon a month.
Kurt, are you within the one mile radius?
Yeah.
All right, we'll close that moment. You'll contact, I'll contact. And then at the next one, if we have all of our citizens, then we're picking the council and going for it. I'm just leaving them on unfinished so that nothing gets dropped.
I like it.
All right. So on the other unfinished, we were talking about our anti-camping regulation as it pertains to Martin versus Boise.
Sir?
I'm sorry, I mean, there's someone that wanted to comment on that.
Oh. Where did it?
It's under the minutes.
Under the minutes? I'm sorry. Go for it. Go for it, because I missed it. That is my big bad.
Yes, Jack?
Open top public comment?
Yeah.
Yes.
Jack Fields, now a summer resident of Venice, although I grew up here. A number of years ago, the commission passed, instituted a charge of forty-five dollars per lot for street improvement and maintenance. From what I can understand, that had a shelf life and was collapsed at the end of that shelf life. But as that came due, the commission now, or in the past, extended that assessment of forty-five dollars per lot. My comment is, again, that over that period of time, I've not seen a great deal of improvement in the lot, or the-
Streets.
Street improvements, or maybe maintenance. My question perhaps is, what are the present or future plans for that money that Apple collected? And will that assessment, again, at the end of the next shelf life, be updated?
All right, Jack, during public comment, we're not supposed to respond, so I will put it on the meeting to give an update officially.
I'm, I'm sorry, but my hearing is not-
And I'm soft spoken, so we're quite the combo. So we're technically not to respond during public comment on non-agenda, but I will put it on the meet, the next meeting and have a report for you on where the street maintenance plan is at, okay?
I will be enough.
All right, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
All right, any other public comment on non-agenda? I'm going backwards. Going twice? Third time? All right, we'll close that and go back to anti-camping. So I put this on there for the council to decide if they wanted to tackle trying writing the legislation portion, if we wanted to continue down this road, or we wanted to contract somebody else to do it, or?
You know, there are some forms that are out there, you know, there are existing statutes or pieces that we've seen. And for anybody out there who's not familiar with the issue, was decided, in case landmark decision, Boise versus Idaho.
Martin.
Martin, yeah, stuff like that, put that out. And basically, the whole thing of the US Supreme Court is that, or night circuit, or night circuit, is that if you, if a town or a town does not provide homeless shelter, then you cannot prohibit overnight camping in public places. So if you've seen any of these news reports, what's going on in Arizona, San Francisco, California, and other places, you know, they have these camp cities, and they're camped out on, you know, library grounds, or right out in front of City Hall, or in any public parks, and people just like growing up tents on the city sidewalks. It's because of this determination, though. I was basically informed of the determination by your chief of police, John Moore, who learned about it up at the police cap. So we wanted to follow up on it and be a little bit ahead of the curve for a change, and be proactive in trying to adopt an ordinance that reasonably regulates overnight camping. And what we were proposing to do is make it so that in any residential area, you would not be able to camp overnight. Of course, I'm not going to go into the details of the difficulty of defining what overnight camping is, because that's really where the challenge is, like anything else. But part of the focus was to maybe designate an area. Because there are no homeless shelters, municipal city, not a bad, it's not homeless shelter. And so you cannot prohibit it, at best you'd regulate it. And the regulation that we were considering was to designate an area of lines to the park.
Or here.
Or here at Town Hall. So that's, that's basically the premise behind the ordinance. We looked at several towns and other jurisdictions that had adopted ordinances, and feel that we could draft something up that would be forcible, reasonable, and fit the requirements of the town. But obviously, I mean, this is legislative, I agree with you in public, you have a comment, and I will do whatever I'm to do to inbound to the law.
So public comment, now that we've kind of got the introduction. Lots of ideas. Going once? Twice? Three times? All right.
I'll be the people, moving people along. I don't want to see it here.
Council.
I've done it in California, I'll do it here. I'll be private on personally, I don't care. Yeah, and I think marrying Twin Bridges, we are on a, we're on a bike route, we're on Continental Bike Trail. People do come through here and could utilize this service, and in order for-
Officer Moore to be able to enforce, correct me if I'm wrong, enforce any of, uh, any laws, we have to at least provide, uh, this service. So, yeah, I think it, I think it can be, uh, I, I think it can be a good thing for the town, but, you know, I mean, most people don't choose to be homeless, some do. But, you know, hopefully, uh, you know, whatever as a municipality, I think it would be good to mirror what Twin Bridges has. But definitely, I, I, I think back here, uh, is a great place for it.
I do too.
Okay, so the next portion is, would somebody try, want to try and draft the legislation portion, or would you like to have James do it, or how would you like to approach the next step?
Uh, they have a designated area, yeah.
But did they have a code that allows for enforcing, you know, in other areas where you, where camping? So, I mean, we could definitely look at Twin Bridges if that's something that they're looking at. And then you just substitute town address for the word Twin Bridges. And then you look through it and see where else may need modification.
Does it allow, not tampering? I believe it's been doing with this issue too. I don't know if they've passed a code or not, but there's been a lot of active discussion there. So they might give that for example, if they have, but they also have shelters.
Yeah, and one, one other option I brought up too is to annex, uh, the BLM property, the park across the river and as well, uh, if, if need be, but.
And they would still own it?
This could be my next question.
Maybe you just wanna put an arrow.
Alright, so I'm sensing that the council feels this is over their, their realm.
I heard Corey's volunteering to get a copy of the Twin Bridges ordinance. He's gonna do a initial review.
Okay, and then call.
He's gonna send it to me and then we're gonna work on that.
Okay. And if you re, if you need the other examples, we can work together on that one.
Cool.
Okay. It's like what? Alright, the other one that we had talked about was, that's almost paired with this, is parking in the North Forty, uh, Title Seven, Chapter Seven, Section Six, Subsection Eight, to add parking restrictions. There's a list of streets, so in the design, they weren't really designed to have parking on. The parking was meant to be in the back, not on the street. And if you look at when there are vehicles on the street, they tend to be inaccessible by emergency vehicles with vehicles on them. That would be no parking anytime on Pearl Street north of Clark, no parking anytime on Clark, no parking anytime on Bujo, or Landing Lane, or the Oval and Steffi One Way Street, parking on the east side only. Public comment?
Wouldn't you, once you make your determination, would you simply ink those areas red? So it was clear, you weren't dependent on a sign?
I think all the other ones are signed, we'd have to look into that. And then with the curbing and the maintenance, I don't know which, which would be the better of those, but.
Well, and the only other problem with the paint is that in the winter time, which we have nine months of, you won't be able to see it. Do you still have to have tint?
Okay, alright.
Yes, I'm, I'm for both.
Otis is not on here.
Cause a lot of people can't read.
I almost feel like we voted on that already.
We already did. Yep. That's already been voted on.
So this would be the addition. Alright, public comment number three. What? Alright, commission.
I don't have an issue with any of it.
These are all per recommendation of Officer Moore.
And yes, I've been, I mean, I don't drive fire trucks often, but what I do, I do lack a little bit more room than what's there currently. Unless I like to spray some paint and people just don't seem to love that. Body repairs are expensive. Alright, so I will create resolution of intent and start full ordinance. Yes, Brandon?
Number ten, Oval and Steffi One Way Street are, how are we going to determine the direction? Are we gonna have that, like, do we need to clarify that?
To the right.
Okay, got it. Okay. I was like, do we add that into the wording?
Alright, so I'll prop this for a resolution with bindings. And then we'll go into ordinance on that.
Sounds good.
Alright. Now onto regular schedule, done with old business. Karen, you're kind of up.
Alright. Um, so, we're currently in the library board, we take a seat. It's been probably two months ago. Um, we, we posted with the vacancy. For, you know, this. And I'm, I'm working, I'm working, on behalf of the library board. It looks like we're bent on that moment. She has petition and, um, we want this night, we could be here tonight, but I just wanted to be her case starter. I'm interested in serving as a member of the board from Madison Valley Public Library. I work for volunteer boards, not only as a volunteer, but as a member of the guidance by the board. I was employed as the office manager for the Madison Four H Foundation for nine years, working closely with several board members. I currently volunteer on Madison County Library Board and on the governing board in church and relationship with volunteer bodies and staff. Interesting and it's challenging. Madison Valley Public Library is a source of pride for the pleasant and bright atmosphere is a combination of well thought out building and the staff who truly enjoy the experience. I'm committed to doing my part to strengthen that. Realistic, realistically, everything I'm making at Madison Valley, that I always try to bring to the best of perspective groups, who feel to work. If you mind me a positive, there's issues before that would serve as pride and pleasure and it would be a common, if you've already grown, already strong, vibrant, but I'm not sure. And we, and I'm just speaking for myself, would you like to have that? Okay, maybe any further questions?
Nope. Alright, public comment. Martha being appointed to library board. Going once? Britten's comment? Twice? Three times? Now to the council. You were almost there, I had it.
Okay, I made a motion to appoint another public collective board.
I second that.
Motion has been made and seconded, discussion amongst the council. Congratulations.
Don't, we don't need to take, we don't need to.
Alright, discussion amongst council? All good.
Great addition.
Alright, any other, so I can close that part.
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, you're welcome, Martha. Tell her thank you and we really appreciate her service, cause.
Sorry, I'm the county.
Come on, ask Stan. We could use Stan Clumman.
Alright, Maria, you are up.
Okay, representing the zoning board of adjustments. Uh, we met this afternoon. Maria, do you hit the, turn that speaker on if it's not already?
There you go.
Thank you.
We met this afternoon beginning at three o'clock. It was a new process for everybody, a learning experience. Thank you for, all the board members for showing up and clearly having done your homework. I was really pleased Mr. Greenbaum was here to keep us down the right path. Ultimately, our decision today to make was to uh, accept, deny, or modify the appeal for the car wash. And because of the way our job description is written, we had to do one of those three things. So we, because the staff report was comprehensive, we felt like Suzie did a great job. All the consultants that are the underlay to this ultimate report, all came to the same conclusion that it did, that was determined in Suzie's summary report, that it did not comply with the zoning. We upheld that determination with a further recommendation that the owners, their representative, come back to the town with a request for a zone text amendment. And we highly recommend the commissioners approve that. It's, they have been through this for a couple of years now, through two different zoning administrators. Gotten a lot of verbal promises that nobody can back up. They've proceeded based on all of those. They've done their work. It would be a great asset to the town. We don't feel like it's going to be, have a negative impact on that site. So, once you receive that application, it's our recommendation that you approve it and expedite it. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria.
You're welcome.
Should we move over there? This is a new one, so I guess with the update, we still do public comment? Yes? Alright, public comment.
Go for it.
It was, it was a, a long discussion, okay? And we all were searching for ways to get the car wash approved. But based on the rights as they're written and process, I think Suzie did a great, the right thing. But we do think that the text amendment is gonna be the quickest way to get a car wash added to CCRs. And we all support you guys approving that as quickly as possible.
Hundred percent, I believe these guys have been through a lot of nonsense, just disorganization within the town. It's frustrating, it's a lot of money that they've spent unnecessarily. And I think, again, like Tommy said, Maria said it will be an asset to our town, and you just said.
And it was a unanimous decision.
Yep. Their intent when they bought the lot was a car wash, it wasn't a restaurant or anything else, it was a car wash. They talked to the seller, Mr. Biavich, he deemed it that if one was suitable as a car wash under what he was reading at the time. There was no ill intent to come in and try to pull the town with one thing or another, it was a car wash when it was purchased and that would be original intent.
Rianne Johnson, representative of Johnson and Mullen, who are the owners of the lot that they want to permit the car wash on. And I just wanted to say, um, you know, thank you to the zoning board for very thoughtful and thorough consideration of the appeal. Obviously, I would have liked a different outcome, but I also understand the constraints of the zoning board. We will be pursuing a text amendment change. Um, I believe I need to confer with my clients a little bit more, but, um, I will be headed down that path, more likely than not, and we do hope that we can have cooperation and finally get this done.
So that would be regular ordinance amendment to, so, correct? Alright.
So, um, town chairman, so I wanted to thank the zoning board as well for all the careful consideration. I'd like to thank Rianne for bringing, uh, first appeal, the zoning board's adjustment. And, uh, you know, for her, for her sake, yeah, it would have worked out better perhaps if she had, uh, received a different decision, but, you know, any aggrieved person including the town, trial appeal based on, uh, determination from the zoning board, so that might not have been close to speeding away. I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Johnson, well, for his, uh, very kind conduct, a perfect gentleman up there. We've seen a lot of people come in here frustrated with the process and, and, uh, you know, thanks as opposed to presenting your side of the case, so. Appreciate all that. I discussed, and of course it's not binding in any way, but I discussed with Rianne the idea that, that if, that is, if she starts drafting the code amendment, you know, that'll help tremendously in moving things forward. And essentially what they would do is define a car wash, give a definition of what that is, and, uh, maybe give some design parameters and standards for a car wash, okay? That would be uniform and for out the CCR zone. You know, the brand, there's nothing stopping you, well, from stating that car wash, you know, there's text amendment may or may not help you, but I mean, you could propose it to be other zoning districts. The commission could do that, they can modify it and say, okay, based on this definition, we'll be able to allow it in other areas, might be beneficial if it's only in your one zone. But it's not gonna be site specific, it will be a, a text amendment that would allow a car wash as a conditional use within the CCR zone. And then once that, uh, is adopted, okay, then they would apply for a conditional use permit. And then a conditional use permit would initially get reviewed by your zoning administrator, then by your planning board, which is, I guess, an information process. And then would eventually come to the commission for a conditional permit review. And you would apply the standards that Rianne's going to draft. Along with your traditional, traditional standards as well.
Alright. That closes the public comment, unless anybody else has anything on public comment. Commission. I know, that's why I'm looking. Our next meeting's the twenty-third, so I'm like, can we magically put it on the agenda? Can we have it prepared, cause we would have to have it in the paper tomorrow. Yeah. Come on!
Well, I think it also, it has to first get reviewed by your planning board.
It doesn't exist, and it could never exist, so we're not waiting on this, we're not waiting on that.
Proceed. What is, I know you were trying to assemble a planning board, is a very gap filled in the interim, or?
We are it.
We are it.
We are it, so it will go through the process until that boards, we are it, until it gets going, and they're going to have to go through training as well, so. It won't be held up by waiting for a planning board to know.
You might possibly be able to do the combined planning board, commission meeting, public hearing.
That would be helpful, too.
Does the, does the codes for like, what it says, restaurant, is there further definition of what a restaurant is?
Generally speaking, yes.
In our codes today? No.
Or something. So, there's a lot of definitions in there, you know?
Yeah, it's patchwork.
It's very patchwork.
Could the, could the text amendment be that's more 11, whatever, blah, blah, blah?
Right.
That it's just adding car wash in there for now? And when we rewrite the regs, there's better, there's more definitions provided. But for this text, text amendment, it's just adding car wash into the CCR reg?
You know, I'll leave, I'll leave that for Brianne. She's, she's going to be the one that proposes it.
And what I'll tell you from my perspective, my concern about doing that would be that if this gets to Suzie and it is reviewed by your technical consultants, they will shoot it down because it's not sufficient. It looks like a one-off work around for a specific project versus an actual amendment that is a substantial amendment.
And I could assure you, if Brianne does a reasonable job defining a car wash and provides a reasonable design standard as a conditional use, then I will review it and I will recommend it.
Yeah, we need to, in fact, I would believe that we are going to propose the text amendment. It would need to be like comprehensive amendment, not just a simple. I know, but I, I understand, but in, in expediting, it also puts my clients in a position of being sent back to the zoning board again, and that's completely not what we want to do. Yeah, I appreciate it. I have two kids, I got four!
But there's, I mean, it's not like this is new. In the state of Montana, there are already green made definitions that are very well done. So, hopefully this goes much smoother. And yes, this is in the plan. That section.
All right.
Thank you for everyone today. The city council, your board that you guys put together earlier, I was the one that spoke on behalf of our car wash, with Tony and I. There was a lot of concerns and there was a lot of direction, but at the end of the day, I, I wish it would have went the other way too, but I understand that they made the decision based upon everybody would like to see a car wash here, but there's some fine points and we'll allow that. Hopefully this is the easiest process for Tony and I to get another winter. I don't live here full-time. She gets to deal with everything with Eric.
All right. Any other commission report?
Do you want to determine when it's going to be? Is it going to be July 7th?
When, did you publish? Do you feel that July 7th, we can put this on the agenda? You're like, whoa!
I would like it to be on the July 7th amendment, and I will do everything in my power to make it happen. I have several other matters and I'm thinking that the commission probably will get it.
Which isn't.
So, um. Just says you can't drive, so drive. So, yeah, let's, uh, July's, I have to, I would have to have it into because don't we have to publish, just notice that this will be an agenda item or the full application of everything for consideration? Because doesn't Suzie have to make a determination? She has to provide her staff report to the planning board, who will shoot drives? And then you guys would have to have the hearing, and you have to have the hearing right before the commission meeting.
Get, get your draft. Get it to us as quickly as possible.
I will. I'm just saying, you know, July 7th might be.
Oh, I'm sorry, July 14th.
I was, I think you, I was wondering. I'm looking at my phone going.
Just look at the first third day.
You were freaking me out over here.
It's the 14th. You don't have to be here. All right. Closing that matter, moving on. Thank you.
Thank you, Brianne.
So, Eric's not here. He's having a night.
Still?
Uh, anyway. So, Great West contracted with, um, O'Keefe Drilling to come back and, um, work a little bit more towards the site near the rodeo grounds. Um, that site hasn't been, anything done to it for several years. So basically, when you let a well sit for several years, it packs it. So, what they accomplished was basically getting out the sand and seeing what, what is kind of started there. Um, on each individual well, there's two actually there. So, the idea is to create a whole field of wells to produce the up to 250 gallons per minute that we are targeting to have our backup water. So currently, they only pumped for very short times and said, we can produce 150 out of one or the other. But not both at the same time have really been tested. So, O'Keefe is going to come back and we're going to pump those wells and see what they produce gallons per minute over an extended period of time and see if site one affects site two. If, you know, you're pumping and it actually drops it down and you're not gaining. And then, if they both hold, then we can evaluate if other ones there would gain us to the cap where we're at. Or if that's just a dead site, or that's not going to be able to produce. Or, the third option would be to put storage facility in there so that while it's not producing the 250, we still have extra storage which may help us meet that demand. Does that make sense? So, one site was definitely more sand-based, one had a little bit more clay to it. So, there's some interesting geology going there, and unless we pump those for a long period of time, we will not know if we have anything. So, they'll come back up and that is going to be loud. There was one complaint that the drilling was very loud and it did go until 11:30 at night, or 11 o'clock at night. So, they've, um, offered to screen. So, they will screen it this time because there will be generators running overnight, multiple hours. So, the plan's to pump for two days to see what happens. So, that is the update from the well site. As far as I know. Preliminary engineering report, um, they have come down and done some of the flow monitoring. Um, requesting records is, and Eric has been a wee bit busy, so he hasn't gotten everything to colet that she has requested. And they are also going to come and do multiple flows at the same time, so we had to extend the contract for two more flow meters at the same time. They only have two. They wanted to test with two more. And after this week, I think this is a very good place to start. Probably could have used it a little earlier. So, I don't know if I tie that in since Eric's not here. Might as well. So, we have a lot of leaking things. I mean, the guestimates are anywhere from 60% loss to 30% loss, 30 to 60 to 70, we've got major leaks. They're not little. I'm starting to see cast iron with bulge. There's, it's an old system. So, and anytime around here that we discover one thing, we tend to discover 20. And that is exactly what has happened. A hydrant was leaking on, by Grizzly? Between Grizzly and Armitage. And when that hydrant, we went to shut, we shut the valve down for that hydrant, going to replace that hydrant the next day. In middle of the night, that valve gave flooding to houses. So, now we're on to, that has been fixed, dealing with the repercussions of older equipment. The valve is at least 40, 50 years old, which sometimes they just don't withstand that kind of time. Then we moved on to that highlighted, that there was one at first and stuff. That there was a leak there at that hydrant as well, and probably in the valve. And then as we went to investigate that, all the fiber optic for town actually runs through that intersection. There's a really impressive, scary, expensive looking bundle in that intersection. And, um, Three Rivers was available to assist with this project if we did it on their timeline. So, we jumped into that. Which led to realizing that other valves were not working or unlocatable. So, there's been 10 and hidden. So, we have located 10 valves in the last 24 hours that we did not know where they were. So, I guess there's a plus. Now, do all 10 of those valves work? Not necessarily.
Those are shut off valves?
Mm-hmm. One was in fact shut off that we didn't even know existed. So, hey, cool. Um, and it does still function, so there's that. But if we do not put in two valves at that intersection at this time, we will not be able to deal with a main line break should it occur.
Again?
Again. So, a 10 li, 10 inch main break is a very big potential in that area. So, I don't know, right, two minutes before the meeting, I also got a video of extra water, so we'll see what my report from that update is. So, the plan is tomorrow to put in two valves, but there, the guys did not give up until 5:00 AM this morning. Went, got a couple hours, went back at it, and it looks like another long night. That's what I know. We also looked at the valving map and established another intersection where if we put two more valves in at that intersection, it looks like we would be able to control town in two block sections. That being said, every time we thought that was what was going to happen, we found a few extra surprises.
Is that all the leaking or the valves and the, or the pipes does it?
There's pipes. Bottoms of the hydrants. So, all of this is classified as hydrant repair and replacement right now, which is handy because we do have the ARPA funds available for hydrant repair and replacement, which is definitely where we're at. So, testing of those hydrants will go on, marking, and then a priority list is going to be made for replacement. On what doesn't meet code, what can't, what's no longer serviceable. Anybody in the room, that's kind of the six month synopsis and it covers all of that. Questions? Old. Old, definitely not maintained in the best manner. There's some interesting fixes that we've found thus far that probably weren't the best long-term fixes. So, we are going for long-term fixes.
So, going back to your first about the wells. I don't know this stuff, so it's more of an education. We have two wells for the town today, right?
Correct.
Are they both at the rodeo ground?
No. So, we have one on Comley and then one on First.
And this is, so where they're drilling is the third site that works for them?
Yes. To meet DEQ requirements for worst-case scenario. Your primary well out on the hottest day with everybody, so basically the 4th of July. Yeah, that day, this is the backup wear. And Bruce was nice, the engineer from Great West. He said, most towns are in the same boat as you. If that makes you feel any better. Okay, not really. Uh, it's just, we've seen too many fires rip through towns at this point. And knowing how town is connected, I want the best possible scenario that we can get for the worst-case scenario.
The other thing I was just going to say is after, it's probably going to be a while, but after can't we should do something for them if they're going to fall beyond?
And they've had a lot of additional help pitching in in the middle of the night, so.
That would be my question. Are there any funds to buy them dinner, lunch, something, bring it to them?
We will find a way.
We should probably do that.
Mary Anne is happy to buy all their
Aww, thank you. Thank you, Tony.
Not you guys.
No.
Those guys.
People have been extremely understanding. I've actually been shocked.
Oh, good.
Yeah, like, you know, I just explained and embraced what Nikki just said of like, yeah, this from here. Unfortunate circumstances all happening at once.
Um, it might not be now.
I'm guessing not because we're getting a lot of phone calls. I'm carrying the phone ring, so.
Yeah, but it was on, now it's probably off.
Yeah, it was off at 4:30 when I left. Around Third Street. Fagan was off there a little bit.
So, I think you said anywhere between 30 and 70% leakage. That, is that including pipes, or is that valves and hydrants?
It is pipes, valves, hydrants. I, I saw a picture today of a cast iron pipe with a bulge, which I am flat out impressed. I, all I can think is abdominal aortic aneurysm and people don't live through those. So, thank heavens that towns are not people. When they burst, it does not go well. So, that'll be fun. I think Eric's having more fun than he'd like to.
Can you just put a spin inside of the sub-protector?
No, there are special welders that work on cast iron systems. There's ways to sleeve, there's valving replays, there's all kinds of different. So.
Shoring.
Bed Night Clay is probably not our best long-term fix, which we've seen in some spots as well. Yes. Probably by August. It depends on if it.
Then you'll solicit bids further to work.
Yep. And that's all in here as well as part of that is the target rate and the water rates have to be addressed.
And then Brittany will draft the revised service fees.
That will be a whole interesting.
Water rates.
Water rates. To meet target rate. All right. Target rate is based on.
Yeah, we're at like forty-eight, fifty-four base right now, and we need to be around eighty-five-ish.
And that is, that has to be achieved by the end of project completion. So, when you apply for grants and funding, you have to say that this is the plan over the next in five years, ten years, depending on what our project's gonna be. So, if it's including the whole well development and all this repair, I'm betting it is a ten-year plan. My best guess.
And with that, then you increase even more.
Residential charge.
Average?
Probably sixty. Yeah, between sixty and seventy-five.
Yeah.
Never.
So, can we? Can we discuss the process on that? Is it, so we start off with an updated growth policy? And then would that be a capital improvement? Uh, that we would do, write a grant for?
So, part of that whole report that we are paying for is not just the valuation of the system. They give a rough cost base, and then they also give you your funding options.
Oh, right, right, right.
So, when that happens, we'll have a full report from them on what's wrong, a plan to fix it, how much, and how you pay for it. So, that's the whole report. And if anybody wants to kind of see how things have gone through, there's been several that have just done these large upgrades. Um, one of them being Anaconda. So, they're on a different governmental system, but still same basic because they have a city manager, and he's super awesome and can kind of inform you. And then the mayor of Thompson Falls, they just went through this whole process as well and received several grants. But it's a combination of grant and loans to get through it, so. When it gets to that, we can always invite somebody, come say hi.
Who what?
Thompson Falls, Anaconda. Um, Manhattan also did a large upgrade recently. But the money for the loans is on the legislative session cycle. So, that's why we had to get these done so that in the next legislative session, they prioritize rural systems. And they're like, whoa, yours is really, really bad, or whatever. They have their triage system for funding. So, we needed ours evaluated so that we knew where we were in the triage of the state, so. Yay, step one of the hill.
So, I spoke with Pam from Manhattan, and she's the clerk there. Uh, and she said that she's conducting the, the rate, uh, rate service, rate assessment in-house somehow. Um, I guess it's, uh, filling out all of the paperwork to facilitate. And maybe I, maybe I didn't understand her correctly, but I'm quoting her. She's like, "I'm conducting the rate service in-house."
All right, Pam from Manhattan.
Estimated at eleven thousand dollars. So, if she's doing that in-house, I'm assuming she was talking super fast. Assuming she was gonna save eleven thousand dollars by conducting it in-house. But, uh, that'd be.
Well, it was gross.
Yeah.
Ginger, that, if, that's, if that's their Pam, that's our ginger. Yeah, exactly. All right, any other questions, comments?
Um, one other thing through, so I, I talked to Manhattan and Three Forks today. Those are clerks. Uh, and one of the questions that I asked was, what was, what is the, the town's protocol? Or, uh, when you have shutdown like this happen? And, uh, Three Forks said that only two hundred and thirty people are on, uh, which is a quarter of the population, are on like an email. No, that goes through the county. Um, uh, you can ultimately do that if you have a disastrous, uh, shutdown. But, um, I've had a handful of people that bring it up to me that maybe we should have it on our website, and maybe we do already, I actually didn't check. But, uh, for, for people to be able to sign up for notification if, if water's out or, um, if we have an issue.
We do have, you can sign up on the website, and all the postings that we get.
All right, I apologize for my technical number, sure.
I have received a lot.
And I was just curious, I don't know if we have a protocol as well for like the whole city block gets shut down? Um, I think Three Forks actually call everyone within that block, which, uh, I just thought was interesting. I was just curious what our, what our protocol is for, you know, how do you, I mean, is it just a case-by-case assessment probably? Just did, uh, on, made a phone call, you know, like from Northwood Energy. Showering will be allowed from eight fifteen AM until eight seventeen AM. By accordingly. You know, everybody in there wants.
Yeah. The problem with that is truly, at this point, we don't know what we can and cannot shut down. Where if we have tried, they have tried to isolate certain portions of the town, and other valves have shown themselves. Or they are literally paved over. So, a valve is not very handy if you can't access it, is the other portion. So, long-term, that would be amazing, but currently, I don't think it's feasible because we can't seem to shut it down. It doesn't.
You're shutting down more than what you thought you were.
I'm gonna put this in my report, but we actually, with the new portal, online portal, one of the things that we signed up for is, uh, it's called IVR system service. And you can text, email, or have automated calls to those people. And we just have not gotten it set up yet since the portal just went live last month, but that is something that we can do. Had I known this was coming, I would have gotten this done, but. So, we, yeah, with the new, that company that we are thinking that they, that was one of the things that we opted for. Because it's, it's no charge until you do that, and then it's a charge per call or text or whatever, so.
Any other questions, comments on that? We can move on, all right. The property reports, Karen, you're up again, hi!
Very official. Um, how you, uh, you have my written report, so I just wanted to tell you about a couple of things. Um, our, while our problem is very minimal compared to what's going on in town, but I am looking for, I still am looking for a timer that's certified in backflow checks and operations. So, if anyone has any recommendations, I would be grateful. Um, our, our issues are, um, the system, when everything's on and you use the system, we'll just start hammering, and then which causes a pressure to, um, go out of control, and the city commission will just burst. And we've had a, I don't know, it's been a while, so that we have recently been flooded. So, we just shut everything off every night, that's what we're, we mitigate every night by just shutting all the water down. So, I find it fun to check things. So, I'd be interested if one, or the other, the, you part of a, a country called?
Uptown?
Uh, country, a country.
John, Rob Cameron?
They're out.
Oh. Thank you. Yeah, and, and any recommendations there? Super helpful. Sounds good, okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, and the other thing, you know, I just want to highlight is really, everything from here until the end of August is all about summer reading program for us. And, um, I don't know if we've heard why we do it, or if you've heard mesh field about why we do it, but from, but libraries kind of pick up that, that summer activity because over many years of data, um, we have, we have something called a summer slide. If you have kids, you probably recognize the summer slide, um, that term. So, basically, if, so this is generalizing a lot. However, if two kids start at kindergarten, and they go through school at equal pace, they have the same learning opportunities. In the summertime, the child that has access to enrichment, not just books and stories, but, um, math, science, other enrichment activities, their learning opportunities grow. Their growth mindset continues farther than the other child. When they re-enter school, they continue at the same pace. The child that has access to enrichment over the summers, their learning opportunities advance. So, data shows by the fifth grade, kids of all ages with summer learning opportunities, um, are often two to three grade levels ahead of the child below it. So, that's why libraries invest so much in the programs, and that's why we invest so much in our program. And our amazing Bailey Gibson designed an outstanding program for all ages this summer, and we're super excited about it. Um, and we just had a parent actually just came in today and just think it's we're pleased that we're providing a safe place for kids to hang out. Um, for the various ages, they will have to come in. We have kind of a core group of all ages that kind of enjoy their programs. It's really nice. Um, do y'all have any questions, or me? Yeah.
So, uh, recently did like fifteen hours of continuing legal education of Sputts Wright, Montana Municipal Insurance Association. One of the big issues that was brought up was about library liability on an employment employee standpoint. So, just curious to know what is the status with all that?
So, our board will be going through a template that MMI has provided tomorrow. Um, and then we will then write up something that probably looks exactly like the template that MMI gave us, and turn it in, and the due date is at the end of June. So, I will have that probably by the end of work hours tomorrow.
And that will formally establish?
An interlocal agreements.
And, or an inter-law agreement?
Yes, with yes.
For insurance purposes?
Correct, yeah, from a risk management standpoint, MMI would like the library and to define their relationship with the town department. So, they have established a set of criteria that libraries should meet in relationship to the town. And our case is very nice because we already meet those criteria. It's something that we've always done, but never defined.
Okay, so, how would you, like, are, are you going to be employees? Are you employees?
We are employees, yes.
You are employees?
Yes.
And they receive the manual, and I'm trying to figure out the best filing system and all that for verification that everybody read their little book and signed off.
Yeah, we can talk about that. My assumption was that we would provide it to Mayor Haas, would provide it to you, and MMI, and.
Well, I think, all I have a whole opinion is that, I mean, it was like, at least one solid hour, if not more, on this issue about defining libraries, are they employees, or, you know, are you compliant, all that?
Yeah, it stems from the fact that libraries are a separate entity and under the same umbrella as a municipality. And it, and it differs from library to library. So, some libraries, like us, our relationship is pretty similar. You know, we have, our, our goals are similar, and we follow town policies already. Some libraries that might be their own district or under a county might not be in a similar situation. And so, and so every, every definition in every municipality will probably be different.
So, just because I'm driving down Rowan, I've seen says public library doesn't necessarily mean that it's a municipal or a county.
Yeah, they're all different. It depends on how they were established.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. Do y'all have any questions about that particular, we will talk about tomorrow? Yeah.
And I'm, I'm assuming they discussed volunteers. I did, we kind of talked about a similar, uh, topic that our boot training a couple weeks ago.
Right, yeah, so we then have, I think it will be the same, and that is addressed in the paperwork that we are reviewing. However, that's something I will double-check with, with Ginger. Um, we kind of, we kind of had an umbrella with our policy of volunteers, the board members. And I think that will continue, but I don't want to get any better than that. I think so, but we, but we have yet to, 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 to get a question.
Yeah, yeah, it came up when we did like Lions Park, all that stuff. Did we, I'm just curious, did we have a, like, all, everybody signed in?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, and we have it.
Yeah, so what I, and what I have asked for help in, uh, actually from, from different libraries is cracking the volunteer policy, so we can more easily get them to that, you know, in that respect. Right now, we don't have a volunteer policy, and I think it would be better that way.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, I think so, and, and one of the other things that was kind of brought up was just documentation of, you know, hey, there's one who are volunteering.
They do keep that anyway, you know, we keep that as part of our year-end stats. Um, so we can have an informal record. Okay, yeah, I'll let that tomorrow, it's great.
Karen, do you have any idea how, uh, MMI started, you know, what triggered this?
I, I have an idea, I don't know if I'm right. Um, you know, in the past, I don't know, probably in the past year, uh, imagine if the, the Calphone Library System has gone through a lot of change with their government, their board, um, which, and their directors, which brought a lot of attention to the library as an entity. So, I, so it's always been status quo. However, and, um, because of all the changes, they were, they were pretty, um, pretty public. I think MMI realized, wow, from, you know, that from a risk management standpoint, this did not work for us. That, that, so it, you know, in a long time, we've anticipated that libraries are separate. So, how can we ensure someone is not actually part of the policy? Um, does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay.
Right, structure-wise, what we just did was choose a library board member, a new one, and then you guys go and conduct your own business with your meetings.
Right.
Just like we're having our.
Right.
All right, any other questions for Karen?
You, you.
I can, I, uh, showed up for the Native American cooking class, What Happened? Brian Conklin.
Ah, okay. So, that, so that was virtual.
Oh, was it really?
Yeah, right, that was, was virtual, so I'm sorry about that.
No, that's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's like.
You're writing something for you?
Yeah, right. He was, he was talking politics.
You're like, I wanted food. That is a major disappointment when you expect food.
I like the politics.
No. All right, any others?
Thanks, everybody.
You all have John's report? We go, what does he say? Questions, comments, my door is always open? Is that how it pretty much goes? Speaking for him.
I just have a question. In the future, um. Damon Officer Fisher's schedule is over a while, but it's right in four quarters.
Every three weeks. So when you, I, we can ask, but when I looked at the numbers, if you look at the report, and I guess this is my take on it. Um, and you look at the time of day. The vast, he had a report that had, and maybe I can ask for that again, but he was reporting the time of day previously. And most of it was during the day. And I was surprised. It was counterintuitive to me. But I can ask him to put that on the next report as time of day. But I know that's how he was evaluating when to do calls. Oh, there on the bottom. Yeah. So when you look at that, and those are all through dispatch. So.
But there's more share records, but, right, that wouldn't be up there for.
It's anything in our jurisdiction. And then if you look at them, like, he will say which agency responded. So he's got location, agency. And the response. So this is everything that was responded to within our area for the month. And then, so the total calls, and that's why I think they're on the days, is that there's actually more calls. Call volume is forty-three calls during the day and nine calls at night. I know. When I was reading it, that's why I was like, that is counterintuitive to me, but maybe not. People actually do sleep.
So most of the nighttime ones were, certain family members told us, obviously. They're more serious.
They weren't sleeping.
They were not.
They were not sleeping, apparently.
Wish they were.
So we can look at that, too. The evaluation of severity of night calls.
And maybe, uh.
Well.
I, I think it's a good question on policing, but, you know, he, he can explain all that. And, you know, what I would imagine, since I've been prosecuting for about seven years down here, is that he'll tell you that, you know, most of the problems are during the day. You know, and he's still there. I mean, it's like nine oh one, just that, oh, you know, there was a lot of capacity.
They can say that court has got a hundred and twenty-five percent of the month.
But that is something to be relevant. So as we, Billings faced this immensely, where everybody was screaming that Billings needed more officers. There is another portion of that whole process, right? You can have all the officers in the world, but what happens if you don't have the support staff? AKA your court clerk. You got, you've got Suzie Mondays, that's it. We, she's, she's Mondays. You, you got eight court clerk on Mondays to process tickets and handle all that. I'm just saying, like, if in long-term planning, you look at adding two more officers or whatever to cover your nights. Probably Monday from whatever hours will not be sufficient. And then Jim gets more to do and Art gets more to do. And will it be sufficient to have one day of court? Long-term? Yeah, Billings did not, it did not go well. Plenty of officers at one point, not enough prosecutors, not enough anyone. Not enough to get the paperwork even through to get them to court.
The numbers I heard from, you know, the seminar, it was just, oh, real work. Happens up on the great falls, it's up to those trends. They have eleven thousand criminal prosecutions per year. You know, and you have handful of prosecutors.
Yeah.
Eleven thousand. Sure, Billings has more than, and serious, serious cases. Unfortunately, uh, you have a lot of serious crimes down there. I mean, you, when you think about that homeless situation, I mean, Corey, I agree with you. I mean, it's, that's what the court said. You cannot criminalize, you can't prosecute people as criminals for being homeless. But you can if they're disorderly or if they're, you know, defecating in the street, transacting drugs, raping each other. I mean, these homeless camps, I mean, yeah, we could be sympathetic. We all have homes we go to at that. And, but, I mean, you can't be sympathetic when people are homeless and they're committing serious crimes in the street. And you probably, no regulation, no, no real way of controlling.
We're going. All right, anything else for law enforcement? Public Works. He's a little busy right now. I think he's almost a scuba gear, but maybe not. It's not funny. Um, along with, I guess, his portion, um, there were, he's been working with Ginger to budget. What else has Eric been doing? Worth prepping for another position. There's not enough. There's not enough. When people are, are upset about streets, I totally understand it. I also understand that there is one, two, three guys that take over your water system, your sewer system, all of your parks and your streets. One, two, three guys. I cannot imagine that that is ever going to actually make it in the summer. When it takes one guy almost a full week to handle just the mowing, trimming, and maintaining of parks. So we're running for another person to maybe help with some of the enormous load. Uh, he has also been working on permitting paperwork, trying to figure out exactly all the hoops that we need to jump through for the dike repair. The park looks beautiful, but every time I drive over the bridge, I see that gaping hole and have a little bit of panic. Cause June, July, August, September, October, I've seen it gorge November, usually not until January, but. I feel a pressing countdown. Um, what else? And that's, that's pretty much the highlights of Eric's adventures. Um, we're. Um, we're purchasing our own leak detested, leak detecting system equipment and getting training on that. Um, and having some assistance with that. I do have shut up. Bozeman came down and helped us for a little bit this week.
You did?
Bozeman, Public Works, came down and gave us some assist as well. And then, um, Forty Fifty Development's been helping as well with crew. Cause we don't have enough, our equipment's not big enough. So we've been having all kinds of helpful hands. So yay, and yes, coffee, drinks, whatever, maybe heavy drinks. They'll fall asleep on their feet here preseason, so no, not until they're off duty. All right, Suzie, you up?
I failed because you didn't give my report and you're not there. I apologize. Thank you so much. Oh, wait, oh, I'm sorry. You don't want this on there. I mixed them up. I did this by accident. I think you're helping me file it tomorrow. You all right? What? Shoot. You want? I'll see that. I'll be at one. Yeah, okay. This is, I mixed up the papers from the report I did.
Let me see what it worked out.
Yeah. Most of my time has been focused on the field. I never have, a couple of other big ones coming up on the twenty-third. I'm, no, thank you.
He's like, no.
Not yet, anyway.
So the Valley Tradesman will be the twenty-third, correct?
It will, and so will, um.
So Willie's zone site is not a conditional use permit? Okay. Okay. That was my next question. You got it.
I took off some from last month, so, um, there's more projects, but I took off this.
So how does that work if it's in the overlay district, but it's not a conditional use permit?
Well, it doesn't really specify it in the code. So what they've done in the box is, is, so I'm going to. Helping you.
Okay, here.
Cause it's, it's in a commercial area. So all of the commercial. All the traditional elements, so they have certain.
And kind of the traditional neighborhood intent and purpose in it says that it's to be at public meetings for. The purpose of the TND was to have public input. So that's where I'm getting it in the code. Questions for Suzie?
So Suzie?
So, um, I'll leave it at that. So do.
None of these on here is, uh, probably. John, John Wayne.
Yeah.
Yeah, the.
Hold on.
Yeah. Whatever the one is, it's down here. This one is that, it's the one, one of them I saw. Okay.
And the point of contact for the Riverside, is that Chris Murphy?
Kind of, um. Oh, I lost his name.
Trevor McSpedden.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
McSpedden.
Has been. During most of, most of the conversations I had, Corey, he knows I've had from now on, Chris Murphy is, um, always. Um, they're getting super close to volunteering before you. Um, I would have given them, uh, wanted them on the murder, but we have some questions. She wants her life first, second her and the goal is, um, her, Chris, her, the mental conversation. They're gonna, um, I haven't done a lot on that project because it's big and it's complicated. So for us, it's not a lot. He's breaking it down, basically, in a few different steps. First, they're going to ask for a tax amendment also. Um, their tax amendment house, we would allow all these in a certain code, you know? And then, um, I think Ann said in the comment after the, the steps are done.
This.
No, 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 I got you. The, uh, so having RVs in a certain zones, that's still, are still gonna be ten acres for an RV park, isn't that five? Is it five? Yeah.
Who is? RVs are not allowed in any zone in this region right now.
See that one? Would you say that there are times when you could have a conditional use permit without TND review? And there, okay, and there are times when you can have TND review without your DND condition? So, that's it. So it gets back to the discussion we had about, and I just could sit down and start wrapping up that matrix of uses. Like the zones, each zone district, we're gonna do like a spreadsheet.
Yeah.
So you have like this across, uh, zone district names, and then you have permitted uses and then condition uses, right? And like X or P or whatever you need from it. And then you'd be able to look at in one page, one diagram, all the different uses that are allowed. And then the condition uses in each district on one spreadsheet. And then you have maybe an asterisk or another column, TND. So then we have like a perfect picture of everything that's going on.
Corey's a bit of a focus. Firstly, after the last meeting, and we did one, um, for.
Sure. Yeah, I think it'd be kind of fun to even have it attached with all these, cause that's why I'm asking about the Riverside. If we need to go and engage some of these individuals and some conversation about, maybe do our own research to make sure they have the best interest of the town in mind.
Um, here it is, I was.
And that, back here, I see something interesting here. Let's go back to our CBA here. At eleven dash four dash nineteen, sub P, the fourth, rezone. And a rezoning is required prior to approval of a conditional use permit. The application for rezoning and a conditional use, use permit may be filed, activated on simultaneously. Let's bring in, we have to hear about that, too.
So in, in the original Riverside, there was, um, kind of a meeting, a stakeholders meeting. And that included Alex Vogel, Art, you, um, Trevor, and Kelly. Want to say somebody else, but basically, most of that group is gone, except for the applicants and Suzie. So Eric has not actually got to, like, sit down and have a full, what can we? So Eric has not actually got to, like, sit down and have a full, what can we expect? What is that and the other? Now, there's anybody from the town other than Suzie. So, just trying to get a stakeholders meeting, so we could get anything ironed out before we had to come here. I'm getting Collette and Forrest online with me, so we're gonna, we'll be contracting services, but this is not one where. A rush or any kind of thing, I think this needs to be taken. With all the information well established. So, I was going to make that meeting, and then I realized that elections were happening, so it's really hard to have stuff. When space is already used. Multi-use building. Alright, any other questions for Suzie? Right.
Um, so one of the things I was gonna comment on was the IVR tech service, so I think that might be priority?
Yeah.
Okay.
Please.
I will work on getting that set up. Um, I just recently mailed out four hundred and something business license renewals. Um, so after the last meeting, when that was approved and finalized, I put together a new application that kind of. Has a little more detail than we've ever collected in the past. Um, plus the new fees and short-term rental checklist. Um, and got that up on the website. So got up there, but then, um, mailed out to everyone that we've had, um, business licenses with in the past. Um, and working on just making sure publications for things that I'm working on are in the paper, although they got missed. Uh, the paper didn't put it in, so, um, that was the marijuana ordinance thing, so that's now postponed until.
Our first reading will be twenty-third.
Cause they missed putting it in the paper in time, so. Um, and then, uh, getting the final draft of the resolution for, uh, water service fees. Um, so we've talked about this multiple times in the past, but like the, the delinquent fees, the shut-off notices for, like, Eric to go out and put a notice on your door that you're. Over sixty days has to, um, mailing service fees, um, for delinquent bills. Um, return check or non-division fund fees, those are things that we just don't have in place and are very costly to the town. So, um, that will be ideally on the next, one of the next meetings. Um, get that put in resolution and done. And then I've got a list of items to help Eric with for the, um, Great West water rate stuff, so then I started working on that. Um, and then, yeah, I think the portal's been well received. It's getting quite a bit of use, um, for people viewing their bills online, paying them online, and all that, so. If you wanna check it out yourself, just leave your web ID on the go on. Set up your account. Great, thank you. Ginger.
Uh, you have Mike Britney, and I guess, what do you think about the album, the biggest thing I'm doing is, goodbye.
There's still some things filtering in or waiting on. And as soon as those are in, then we can actually start finalizing. It's just been swapped, it's amazing, the amount of volume from all the departments at once, so it's cool. There, I don't think there was a quiet season to prep for budget, and that's the worst part of it, is usually there's a lull. I don't think there was a lull this year.
This year, it's exceptional.
Yay. Legacy. Alright. Any questions for Ginger?
Um, so the audit, is there any chance we can set up, uh, possibly a meeting with the auditor?
I think so. We, like, virtual?
Sure, yep. No, no, virtual would be fine. Like, I did, I did that one over the phone, and I just thought it was kind of interesting just to, to chat, uh, about duties and responsibilities. As far as, uh, you know, our claims and stuff like that. And it, and it got brought up at several trainings to somebody, I think we had a former auditor in the room, that they were like. Yeah, of course, call them up, ask questions.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, if you get that breakdown, uh, um.
We haven't gotten the full report from the office director.
What?
We haven't gotten their report. Yeah, oh.
And then, um, like the budget too, should, like, we could, when we're having all of those, we can copy the budget. I didn't print them out, you guys today. Revenue and expenditure, how much is our revenue today?
I think you sent the expenditure last.
Sent the expenditure Monday, I think. And it's around here today, because there was some.
We were with the gas tax.
You have some late payments that I wanted to post before I sent the letter out.
But we didn't print them, cause for each of you is there. No, you're good.
But if you want to get copies. No, that's okay, I just, yeah, uh, call us, we'll, we'll.
We're trying not to kill too many trees, but it happens a little bit around here. Yeah, we'll get those. So we'll get you copies, copies of the audit report. And then, yeah, at the last meeting, mentioned that you wanted expenditures and revenue, so we got those, that's, we'll send those out with the packets or right around. Any other questions?
Um. No, really.
Sit down sometime, I mean, even if they come in, whether you're coming individually or as a group, just show you what's on the other book. Because you're gonna get other reports that don't match account reports, and that's what, there's not an odd thing.
Eh, call Ginger up. You can't have her on Monday, she's mic.
Hey, don't do that, I found that out. Don't come on, you know, Friday, it's over. It's gonna come in here, you're cheaper.
Oh, and then, like, I thought that the phones were gonna be really horrible after the first water thing, so I came in to help Brittany. And it was not horrible.
It was fine. It was not horrible to answer phones, but, yeah.
I just didn't know if it was gonna be super busy.
And then people called.
I was like, oh, she's gonna get hit right when we open, and then nothing happened, so I was like, never mind, I'm leaving you alone then, and then I left. See? Just in the nick of time. Alright.
So, the, the training in Bute also, we had, uh, some clerks in there, and, uh, they're just trying to create more time. Uh, to take care of a lot of, a lot of stuff, like, when you get overwhelmed with, with phone calls because of a water main break, all of your. Your, your stuff suffers, but ultimately, I guess, one of the questions that came up in there is like, uh, what is the biggest time waster? In, in town, in Town Hall, I guess. Uh, just trying, just, just from a time management standpoint, uh, you know, and I, I brought up, or, I think a couple of us brought up. Um, possibly even, uh, giving, giving yourselves like a personal day, like a win day, possibly, where it's just like, nope, Town Hall's closed. We're gonna take care of business and all the phone calls will be pulled over the line, or that's even an option, but I just. I, I know from having, like, my bookkeeper, I have definitely set a lot of boundaries, cause people are pretty demanding, uh, this day and age, so.
I can be in at six on Tuesday to let the elected, election official and staff come in. I have like two and a half hours of.
Sure.
Pretty darn quiet, two hours, totally. Uh, yeah, it was, it was nice not to, but at that time of the morning, the phone wasn't ringing and people were coming through the door either, so.
Sure.
But yeah, but it was good to have just.
We were looking at set aside hours. Looking at that again in a little bit more long-term planning. You can't see Brittany's door from this right now. Part two, so, uh, we'll have interim mixed staff as Brittany will be out for a little bit. So then after that, hopefully we get enough, a different sync. It'll be interesting.
Is there cross-training? Like, is there cross?
That's where we're trying, we're gonna get through budget, and then try and figure out how to do payroll shift training to that. But we're, yeah, to budget, I have her, she's gonna eat enough with budget right now. And my other needies. Yeah.
Cause ideally, it wouldn't just be maternity leave, but it'd be like people actually taking vacations, being able to leave and not worry about, is it a payroll week or not?
Payroll will be the first cross-training and then working on the rest of it.
It'll come.
Alright, on the other. Clerky questions. Alright, commission report. Corey, you can start us up.
Um, so Resort Tax, for sure. That's gonna, once we get into discussing that more in detail, and actually attempting to, uh, implement, like, our educational process on that. Obviously, it still comes to a vote, but that's gonna be a board. Uh, I don't think it has to be made up of, uh, it can't, I don't think it can be made up of all commissioners, but we do have mainstream businesses represented with. Uh, you've five right here, which I think is good, as much as I would like to be, be a part of it, it might even be, come down to being that door-to-door thing and, uh, and the discussion. But, you know, once we, once we start moving forward with these, uh, these capital improvements, you know, I have lots of new papers on the table.
Why's your money on the table?
No, that's not it. Uh, capital improvement, uh, stuff, having matching funds for these grants. Uh, you know, having, having this extra money is gonna be paramount, so, I guess. So that's my ten cents on Resort Tax. Uh, the Bute Training, uh, Christie Ranson, and I went to a couple Wednesdays ago. Um, I think Karen covered, uh, the insurance stuff. Just talked, talked about volunteers and risk management, when you, when you have, you know, have these volunteer organizations, it's important to document. What the hours of operations are, what you're gonna do, and who all, who is all involved, so it kind of.
It'll be okay.
What else? What are the, what are the, uh, just a fun fact, uh, that the training was, uh, like, new subdivisions that are coming in. So we have Riverside wanting to annex, and there are gonna be a new subdivision, well, they're potentially gonna be, uh, you can't, you cannot force these subdivisions to install low-income housing. Um, so I think, I think affordable housing right now is an issue we all need to think about with these new things coming in. Um, uh, what, what does that actually look like? Are they tiny homes? Are they apartment complexes? Uh, what am we gonna, what are, that's just an area we all need to do some research on and have an opinion on that. What else? Uh, back to the Resort Tax item, uh, the state, as far as tax structure, which, uh, suggested that the state is definitely going to have to. Explore new options for, um, um, for their tax structure, because, you know, funds are important. We don't have a sales tax, you know, it's always, I think, as mainstream businesses, you guys probably hear that fairly often, what, you guys don't have a sales tax? You know? Um, but, uh, so the state runs primarily off of income tax, and towns and cities almost entirely off of property tax. Uh. Yeah, and, and now it gets, it gets reassessed every two years, it used to be like seven years in between the reassessment. And since, since, you know, and I personally, I think it's kind of a breakdown in the system, uh, how people are offering full price, or above full price, and these. Property assessments are just going up into the unaffordable range for, uh, members of our community.
So that's the important thing to notice there, that, like, the property tax, the amount of mills that is assessed does not change. The value determines the change of the property tax amount. So while, that's just an interesting distinction that is probably going to be extremely relevant as one-twenty-one, initiative one-twenty-one comes up. And if you haven't looked at it, look at it very closely. Um, I'm in the process of drafting a letter for that. It, it caps property tax, so basically, we pay inflation just like everybody else, as a municipality, we pay the same inflation on fuel, on labor, on supplies, on everything else. One-twenty-one caps, caps property tax.
At twenty-nineteen values.
At twenty-nineteen values, so basically, there goes your ability to make improvements. Or keep up at all. And everybody in Town Hall will quit because they no longer get raises.
Unless we have the Resort Tax, then everything's gonna be fine.
But not all towns can have that. And that's the important part. And it is a statewide thing, and it would crush every little town, not a little bit, a lot. They would die out. Cause they can go work at McDonald's, and everybody would.
I wanted to comment, well, with Corey's talk about towards employee housing, affordable housing, low-income housing, all that special stuff. Based on my experience, I grew up in a, in a resort town, a mission town, you know, it's kind of similar to Anderson in that respect, very seasonal. I mean, population, where I was growing up, we'd go from, you know, year-round population of several thousand to ten thousand. Now it's probably go from twenty thousand to a hundred thousand, which is sort of crazy amount of, uh, growth and transient business. Demand for people wanting to be there, and then when that happened, they're gonna want to settle there, then they want, you know, say, I wanna go do some Big Sky, or I wanna have, you know, place in the Hamptons or Toronto, where I grew up. Well, I don't know, from my experience, it's one of those issues that you really seriously, you have to study it so carefully, because. Government, in my experience, there's always the unintended consequences of everything you do. Uh, which is why, you know, some politicians, they just never make a decision, they don't wanna do anything. You are a politician. You're, like, you're represented. What I've seen, like, with the housing issue, it just. What I've seen like with the housing issue, it just, no matter what you do as government, it never works. It just never works. And I understand the, the problem. So what can you, if you can zone an area, you could rezone an area, you create a zoning district. Then you wouldn't call it like low-income housing or affordable housing. But by designating the area where you have higher density, you know, eight-plexes, right? Define, sure, builders are gonna go in there, developers are gonna go in there. And naturally, if you're in an eight-plex or a quad-plex, it's gonna be smaller, right? It's gonna be more affordable to buy than if you're on a five-acre zone. So you can do that, but those are some of the basic planning tools. What happens is though, then you have a whole segment of the population comes out and you're like, hey, I don't wanna be living, you know, next door to an eight-plex or, you know, fully housing and transient's coming in. You know, everybody's got, you know, junk cars and stuff. So then they do what's called exclusionary zoning to cover that, they say, up zone. To start out with a five-acre zone, right? Then uh provide those up, so you gotta deserve more open space, so we create a five-acre zone, right? Now who can afford to buy a five-acre zone? First one buys a five-acre zone, puts up a small mansion that needs thirty-five people to go build it, finish it, frame it, right? Take care of the lawn, the garden, all the other, you know, constant renovations that are going on. Well, where are those people gonna live?
But I think this is one that once we review the zoning, will be the in-depth conversation as to the checks and balances to it. I know there's not gonna be an easy answer, but there have been some creative answers coming out of other places. So Corey, what else you got? Not fun.
Yeah, other than, other than talking to both towns, Man- Manhattan and Three Forks, just the discussion of impact fees was basically what I was asking them about. And so you have to do an impact fee study, that's thirty-eight thousand dollars for the town of Manhattan to do that. Cost of services. Cost of services analysis. Yeah. I don't know, I think I already talked about all this, kind of, so.
So you cannot establish impact fees without doing an impact fee study? Is that what I got? Is that what you just said? And that costs them thirty-eight thousand? I wonder how long you would, it would take to recoup thirty-eight thousand in impact fees to pay for your impact fee study?
You would, so, so you would put in for a grant, so you have to do, first you do updated growth policy, then you do a capital improvement plan, grant, and then plan what to save for, and then you yeah, the last one, is that right?
We are required to have a study?
That's that process, I guess.
Can you tell me, this one I can answer. You have to have a rational basis. So how are you going to rationalize two thousand dollars impact for building a single-family residence, not saving two thousand for? How did you come up with that? You didn't, you, you just like figured out.
Can you rationalize it from other towns of similar sizes?
No.
That is.
You have to have, you have to have some study, some engineering or some support for it.
I'm pretty sure the engineer.
Create, otherwise somebody just says, okay, I'm not paying that, what are you gonna do? They challenge it. Now, I have to defend it, N M I A defends it, somebody's gonna defend it. Based on what, right?
Okay.
Which is why they, you go through those engineering boards and studies.
What else you got, anything? Nope. Randy, what you got? Oh, Gina, what you got?
I don't have a whole lot, I have actually visited about wanting to kind of be involved in this for the impact fees and getting something going. I didn't realize that. So, we were talking results. I know, we're just talking about impact, but did they, did he just give you?
Oh, we talked about.
Yeah, we talked about, the commission can set the higher fees by revolution without impact fee.
Oh, okay, right, that was right.
Yeah.
We talked about zoning as well.
She's like a.
Yeah. We got some nails to nail that, that will be a start in two.
Okay. But I agree, we have these two, so all people using these for some.
The growth policy was last done in fourteen. So that's, it's also on a ten-year cycle, so we'll be looking at doing the growth policy again in twenty twenty-four. Yes, no. Alright. That's master plan, that's like a comprehensive, what was called a comprehensive plan? What?
Six, I mean, efficient.
That, I do believe, is the beginning of the corridor study by the D O T. But that is my guess. That's their road. That is their baby. Super awesome communication.
They can help you out, you have a question on that. You can probably go on the view, it's on the.
Oh, okay.
They have all their projects listed on there.
But I knew with it, we were slotted for a corridor study this year. To the stop sign, so that's kind of where I saw him going, well, and then towards Virginia City, I think is where. It's all the way from, I don't know how far the whole study goes, but I knew that. So yeah, we were slated for that portion of corridor study. What else you got, Nikki? That's all. Randy, what you got?
Well, I wanna say thank you, Nikki, for coming up with both water definitions. And I understand that you're taking on more responsibilities.
That was Brittany. That was all Brittany doing extras.
Doing my just say that work that um we need to be doing. I have talked with lots and lots of people this week, I had talked to Jack, I told him, I did explain everything to him for him, I told him that, since you guys are new, he's probably hearing questions, so that when somebody comes in and asks you questions, you can answer them. I answered the question first. But I told him, he should come in and say, what do you want to say? I did have to talk to people about the water, I had people come in on, whatever day that was, very first one. They weren't that happy. I told them I'm sorry, and I didn't tell them the water. They want to know why everything is on Facebook or online as they don't have all their back information.
Reader board's ordered. Then it can be there too.
Yeah, and I had people ask, would we please, but like something over the top of ours, would we get on your board that says six? Change that. What?
They're saying.
Tell them, I had to tell them, because they were coming in at seven. And they were upset, that they missed non-agenda. One of the things we created.
They can always be submitted. Non-agenda items can always be submitted.
Yeah. One of the things I was thinking, that we created with the whole water situation, because I know when we had the name Waterway, was all of the commissioners went and talked to all of the people that were going to the F A. And it were a thing. I ended up going, I know I stopped pouring, I remember like many out pieces of paper down the infillings. So yeah, we all had to take like streets and do that and tell everybody where to go get water and everything like that. The landing boards, growth policies, actually fun, I do, I do have a question now. How is the master plan, you have any growth policies? I do, I do ask.
So a master plan is like this general overview with all areas possibly identified. Growth policy is more specific to, is what I'm getting from it, but I haven't done growth policy yet, so. You've survived growth policy?
I didn't have to do much. And it was, uh, it was either a A, maybe a A two.
Yeah.
Yeah, the practice for doing, to do the local at the time, um, and then she went great best. Uh, but she didn't finish it, but uh.
She's the grand.
Yeah. She was the local, so she was right here in the head.
Christian Terrell, do what?
Master for plan. Which it was the equivalent of the comprehensive plan, I guess, from nineteen ninety-six. Comparable, is that what we're calling it? Don't know.
At the continuum legal education, I queried Kelly Lynch, who's the director, attorney-director for Montana Lake City and asked her to tell me the difference between comprehensive plan and growth policy.
What's the, yeah, when you get the name, what's the?
And I can find the definition of the Montana Code, comprehensive plan.
Man- Manhattan is currently like just making adjustments to their um.
Growth policy, yeah, I think that's, we will have to look and see if that's something we can do.
They've always used the terms.
When, and like for me, when I did the growth policy, the reason I didn't enjoy being on the planning board is because rather than working on the content of what we were doing, you were analyzing the font of what, and whether or not it was important.
Font is important. When I walked in today, I recognized the font, the script. And I knew right away that that was a policy that I had.
Alright, what else you got? Alright, that's everybody?
No, I have something else. Although I've, I've never listed up there as giving a
Elite, uh, department reports?
Update or, I made funny comments throughout the night, but who's working on your public records policy?
That's next on the requirements list.
Fireball fee schedule for?
Yeah, I don't know that you have.
We don't have anything.
Public records.
We do not.
We do not.
Policy, so.
Nope, that's on my, I've been trying to.
It's in my computer right now, right?
And I'm, and I'm aware that there is one public record request which is pending for response.
Yes. Time to get.
Just bring it out there as a reminder. So if you have, it's an error, well.
Fee, that, I mean, a policy and a fee, so that the time that it's going to take to take all of the emails, conversations, whatever, that's requested and give to the person that's requesting it, that we can reassess those fees so that, yeah.
Isn't there something in Montana Code or in court?
Yeah, there's a, an angle statute that would authorize you to adopt a piece of it.
Is that my reference?
Or. I, I think it's something that you can do by reservation. Point is that if somebody makes a records request and you say, okay, here it is, or you can charge it, the public copy fee, or you can charge it for staff time to review and file all the records, and they can make a very comprehensive request. One of the biggest issues of public records requests is the issue of liability, that they have constitutional right to know and receive those documents. And then they could ask for email, and how are you gonna reassess that? They could ask for text messages. And when I was working at Johnson County, I actually drafted their policy for public records, to do requests. Based on what we knew, we had to buy private charity software for searching email and then backing up email. They, they were dumping data and the county commission was like, oh, I got six thousand emails, delete all. Now, think about what happens when somebody comes in and makes a records request, and generally it's gonna be one or two entities asking for the documents. One, it's gonna be newspapers, the press, they want, they're like digging into some issue, right? So they're not gonna back down because freedom of speech, freedom to discover and publish, they wanna get that information. The second, uh, most challenging example is the person who's prepared for litigation. And they're just looking for something to hang their case up.
So yes, that is on the, I was trying to get through not doing twenty-six things at a time and then not getting accomplished. So both water and marijuana were needed to be done and then off to public records. And I figured the zoning text changes were gonna happen at the same time. So that's the point.
Providing both water and marijuana, that's something to do with dirty fault.
We could, we could be. Alright. So. Sid. We're getting towards the word deterring.
Can you tell?
Yes, we're very much there.
Moving along.
Moving along, alright.
If the corridor studies towards these project for uh, this is services from right there to the um, couch.
So that'll be fun. Yeah. I didn't know that, I forgot about that one. Okay. So I did a six-month recap, kind of very brief. And that's very brief when I actually started looking through what we've accomplished in six months. So I'll send that to the paper, they can pick and choose and go from there if they want any of it, and then I will do monthly updates. And then do the same thing monthly, so they're not as large and maybe they may get in the paper for a little bit of public education as to what's been going on. And try and piece it together, but yeah. Yeah, and they're, this one really, it's beefy, but it's brief, because we haven't covered, I didn't cover actually all the individual ordinances that we passed. And we are um more than the last six years, we've done, we've passed more ordinance in the last six months than they've passed in the last six years. So we've been busy. So throughout the night, pretty much told you everything I've been up to. I'm trying to shift a little bit from the legislative portion of working on some stuff and then getting towards six-month reviews, which John says I need to wait till a year, but still taking notes and collecting all the thoughts for that as they've never been done on staff. six-month reviews, which John says I need to wait till a year, but still taking notes and collecting all the thoughts for that as they've never been done on staff. And going from there. And then, like everything else around here, the, um, job descriptions are either non-existent. Brittany? Or very, very out to date. Um, so those are on my next list to tackle. I'm working on a contract, a basic contract list too. Um, for contractors that can work on the system and the requirements of them working in and around our system, including training records. So if you get the notices from M M I A, I mean, Public Works kind of handles it, but, um, making sure you don't contract somebody and then stick them in a compliance base and then have that go horrible for you later. Um, yeah, and I'm still circling back around on the street ordinance, street bond ordinance or what we're doing there. I haven't completely figured out the plan yet. Um, and then I have a nifty present for all of you. I know, actually, I stole them from the fire department, because we get these, um, I know, it sounds really great until I say stolen. No, they graciously gave them to me. Um, every, uh, four years, is that right? Yes, four years. Um, these are updated, this is a Wildlands field guide, and not that it's anything to do with what you do, but the first part of this actually is what, uh, why I got it for you. It is called operational leadership. And it actually gives you almost step-by-step instructions for taking charge, assessing situations, motivating others, and communications in how to supervise. And as part of that, it acts, it spells out duty, respect, and integrity, and how they achieve that in their crews. So, this is your bathroom reading plan. Pocket site, it's right next to the toilet. And then if you ever want to learn how to like rent a helicopter, or your lookout situations, or whatever else. But most of these books, the big table is the communication failures is how we get ourselves in trouble. So, um, that's definitely. Closing the loops. You can read them, have fun. That's my present, that's all I got. Ta-da.
Why don't you do a drink?
Oh.
My room plate.
Un-scheduled matters? Is that due to you guys or can I, I have to say something?
Okay, unscheduled, what you got?
So, I don't know if everyone knows, but Marshall has designed his chamber of worth, I mean, chamber hours. Did you like to read that? In today's paper, there was an ad for his replacement, the search for him, for his replacement. So if you know anybody that's good at that.
It doesn't not be.
Customer service, please let us know. Uh, or have them apply to the email that was posted. Uh, and if you see Marshall, please extend him a thank you, because where we are, to where, where we were, to where the chamber is now, it's a much better spot. Uh, financially, we've had to enter five months, that was thirty thousand dollar revenue. Which won't be running anywhere in the past. He's, he's here through the fourth of July, um, parade, and then on the agents' festival. So, parade is gonna be bigger and better. Um, re-announcing stands. Got twenty-some entries right now, we spent that in the fourth, but haven't done. So, no motorcycles behind folks this year, what they were, um, to go see.
Alright.
So thank you.
Yeah. Now.
I was, I was actually just gonna bring up one last thing as far as, um, employing, hiring another, uh, public works individual. Kelly Elser has always said that we needed to have three, three workers, because there's, there was always one in transition, either like leaving typically. Um, but it also got brought up in the past to do a seasonal worker, because you're.
Them mowing.
You're not mowing lawns in the wintertime, so just something for consideration.
And there's so much catch-up to do, awesome.
Yeah.
I feel like they could keep a, kind of a person.
Sure, sure.
Just to maintain.
And, and at the back of our mind, um, there's, I know we didn't get to take the tour, but there's that property of Morris Creek, of where, what do I want to call that property? Up there. What? Antelope Meadows. That looks like a concrete bunker of doom. But it is decent property in the long term, maybe housing up there, so that that's an incentive for staff, if we could figure out.
Sorry, stairs, right, yeah, stairs.
That's on the list. Not necessarily, but.
What did I just miss, sorry, what did you say?
There's, uh, but public works property that has no current use, that maybe long-term would be prudent to put that on there too. Uh, if we had to run for a public works director, I know that at the same time that we were looking, Wes Yellowstone was running for a director starting at over forty dollars an hour. So how are you gonna compete? So if you're gonna be competitive, a lot of the composite, they're looking at different functions on how to do it. To be competitive, it might not be a higher wage, because we can't afford that. So you have to do a different, more flexible work schedule, you have to do a housing thing. There's, you have to look at untraditional ways of keeping your workers happy and making them happy. That's all I got.
Is that right?
Second.
Alright. Any discussion, questions, comments? I can't remember where we're at.
Who's getting trained for the, um, uh, what's it called, position, the grant writer?
I don't know, Eric, just like the course.
Yep.
That's.
Yeah, like, at the moment. Alright, and Brittany wants to do it next year, right?
I should get cross training.
First. And then you, your start, something like Grant and.
Let's cover our basics here before.
First. Alright, Cory.
Aye.
Aye.
Claims are done.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Alright, aye, aye, aye. You got the John back.
Hi.
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 Your toes, your backs.
Oh, Brittany.
I have this. Oh, absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
I can see that halfway. One can be.
That's pretty crazy. That's pretty crazy. They need some, they need comprehensive revision versus comprehensive. You can't have like, any comprehensive.
All the way here for the year.
Missing my cellphone pocket, I decided to miss pants.
Nice.
One more.
Well, I was all on it.
He says something, or like. I had time on airplane most of the time, we said we'll never fly it.
I know, that's what I, I'm like, oops, he lets me out of the meeting tonight, I'm like, I must start calling.
That's why it happened when you're handing. That would happen.